All right.
All right. We are here at the June 28, 2021 study session concerning the budget. And we have Commissioner Vice Mayor Trent Davis participating virtually, as well as Finance Director Debbie Pack, who is also going to be participating with us virtually today. So I will turn it over to whoever I am turning it over to physically or virtually.
Sure. I'll kick things off quickly, but certainly want to thank Debbie and Commander for her willingness to lead this conversation remotely while she's on vacation. As you know, this is budget season, budget, budget, and more budget. So she's certainly in the know and in the lead, and I appreciate her willingness to join us today. So you all have the study session packet that was distributed, and we can put that on the screen. And Debbie's been in contact with the outside agencies about the information that's in that packet. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Debbie.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So today's really our last budget study before we have to start making some of our final decisions and putting our budget together, which will happen at our July 12 meeting. Today, we're going to talk to all the outside agencies. They should be there in person, going to give you a little bit of information about themselves and their ask for the 2020 budget. We'll look at the CIP for 2022 and some of the staffing and pay plan recommendations that staff is looking at for the 2022 budget. So with that being said, we'll start with the outside agencies. I have provided some backup information for each of these agencies. So I think what I'll do is I'll just give a brief overview of that finance. And most of this is just financing, historical financing information. I'll give you that, and then I'll ask those representatives to come forward and give you their information as well. So the first agency that we'll talk about is OCCK. From a budgetary standpoint, we've been supporting them for years. As we know, in 2021, the budget, the dollars that we had to put into OCCK were significantly decreased because of COVID. And because KDOT chose to support their portion, which is typically 70% at 100% for a period of time for about a year. So our contribution to them for both 2020 and 2021 were significantly lower. Their request for this year is $818,205, which is about a .8% increase over the original 2020 act. So at this point, I think there's representatives from OCCK there, and we'd ask them to come forward and tell us what's been going on at OCCK.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Debbie, thank you. Patrick Wallerius, I'm the Vice President and CFO of OCCK. I'm going to start it off, like to introduce Trell Ginter. She is OCCK's Transportation Director. She has a presentation slide, and we will make this really quick. And then after that, I will get through some of the budget processes. Okay, Trell?
Hi there, Trell Grinter, OCCK Director of Transportation. And we can go ahead and get our slides going there. Perfect, so just our quick little annual review. For our CityGo service, we gave 202, 357 rides in 2020. That was a little bit decreased from our 2019 because of COVID. Transportation all across the nation took a huge, huge hit with that one. We are seeing that pick back up. We were pretty low in the kind of the February area because it was so darn cold outside. But right now in 2021, we are sitting at 69,969. So we are just shy of 70,000 rides, and that is not including our June numbers. Flipping over, got a quick, quick little graph there for you. So you can see that huge dip last year in quarter two, right when we found out about our pandemic. And we are building that service back up. Salina's ridership is really, really amazing. They truly rely on all of our drivers to get to where they need to go. So it's been amazing to see that climb so quickly when other transit agencies across the nation haven't seen it climb quite as quickly. Okay, real quick on paratransit, that's our demand response. We gave 30,000 rides in 2020. Right now, we're sitting about 12,800 in 2021. Once again, February, when it was so cold, people just did not want to leave their houses. So we saw that dip. But really, really, that paratransit, people were really feeling confident in that one through the pandemic because one person at a time in a van, we were really able to meet the need that way and make people feel truly secure and safe with our procedures. Okay? Also paired a little graph with that one as well. So you can see once again that quarter two, and then as quarter three and quarter four of 2020 came through, we saw that ridership increase. Again, we did an amazing job. We have a great risk management information to our drivers. We did not have the turnover that we were expecting to potentially see with the dangers of COVID-19. We provided masks for all of our drivers and all of our passengers. That provides a coating, and it sits. And as it dries, it kills all of those germs. So we have not seen a transference of COVID through our vehicles. Okay? Next slide. Every year, we like to award our safe drivers. We are building with the confidence they need to successfully do their jobs, current drivers that are succeeding. So that is rolling out as we speak, and we're excited to keep that going as well. Okay, now 2021 and beyond, we have applied for some grant money with KDOT to continue improving our service in Salina. Our fixed route software would equip our CityGo buses with updated technology to count passengers on and off and whether they have the need for a mobility device. So then that means even more data I can get into your hands and even clearer, cleaner data as we make decisions going forward. Mobility hubs is kind of a new term. That just signifies that, man, at Seventh and Walnut, we've got bikes. We've got CityGo. Our paratransit can hop in and serve people at Seventh and Walnut. And then we also have our 81 connection coming into that same location, and our CAN Connect, a new service that goes to Abilene. So that just really provides the passengers at Seventh and Walnut at Walmart with even more options. Number three, microtransit. This is once again another new, new piece to public transportation, kind of a little craze going through the United States. It's like an Uber or a Lyft option, but at a public transportation price. With that, we'd have potentially one or two vehicles being able to give rides to the times that CityGo and paratransit are not operating. So those people that are working overnight, maybe sanitation in those overnight periods, and they don't want to have to wait a whole hour to get on the CityGo bus to get back home. And then number four is another initiative that we're just getting started, work and go. We would love to build partnerships with local businesses to provide rides for their teams or the people that they serve. So that one is up and coming. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I don't have much, anything to add to what Debbie's already said about our budget. It's our request for 2022 is just a little bit more. I think she said .08% more than 2019 and 2020. 20 was an interesting year. Certainly had up and downs as far as public transportation. We think it's going to continue to improve. We're certainly going to keep trying to expand services. We look at our services as not just transportation, but we look at it as access, basically to the people that really need access. Access to work, access to employment, access to shopping, access to medical appointments. So it's a lot more than just public transportation. It's that access piece. So I think I don't need to ramble on very much unless anyone has any questions. That's pretty much, like I said, our request equals 19 and 20. Of course, 20, KDOT funded 100% of most of the year. There are some conversations circling around KDOT that they might continue the 100% funding through January of 2022. I don't know why they picked January. It seems, I mean, if it'd been cleaner, if they picked December. But so it might be that the second half of this year, the contract with the city would be reduced accordingly. Again, we haven't had official word on that yet, but we think we're pretty sure that ridership or the funding, the operation funding, again, KDOT doesn't fund any overhead. They don't fund any repairs, maintenance, any upkeep upon a building facility. A lot of the office staff, as we consider overhead, is not funded. But we should know something probably in the next month, whether or not KDOT is going to continue the 100%. And if they go into January, obviously, our request would be somewhat adjusted back then. So again, I don't know for sure. But it's been, we got a lot of things, as Trell pointed out, a lot of things that's on the drawing board. We want to keep making services better for the general public, making more ridership friendly. Technology is certainly a piece of this. Some of the, she talked about the ADA part of the software will announce stops instead of us going over the intercom. So there's really some exciting stuff, and we certainly plan on continuing to offer the best service we can. So without any questions, that's pretty much it.
Any questions for OCCK?
Could you tell me what the paratransit is? Again, I missed that.
Paratransit, Mike, is Commissioner, is on-demand service where people call up and schedule, schedule a ride. It's kind of a door-to-door type, a type of service. Generally, it's mostly medical. There certainly is some employment, there's some shopping, but generally, it's a medical.
And how does that differ from the microtransit, I guess?
Microtransit, and Trell could probably explain this better than I can, would serve the community hours that we are not running. Like CityGo runs from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So it basically would be an overnight, an overnight run. It would also pick up Sundays, and we only run from 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays. So basically, what we're looking at, if I'm right, it would be to take the hours that we're not running, and we would be providing services.
So basically, the paratransit and the microtransit both work like an Uber?
They're very, very similar.
Now, is for those, or is that?
We've been charging $2.
It's $2 in Saline County, basically.
Now, what we might do if KDOT continues to fund the operation to get some ridership back. And obviously, we lost some ridership. It's coming back. There is a lot of negative publicity concerning public transportation in the middle of the pandemic. People shouldn't, don't ride public transportation. You're going to catch COVID in. But we might present to Mike and Mike to the City Commission, maybe during a time if KDOT is going to fund all of it, we might do free fares for a while. Kansas City Metro, which a lot of the bigger agencies are going zero fares lately. So we thought that might be something we might propose at a later date, so.
Just a couple other, real quick. The Abilene and Concordia runs, is part of that funded through either one of those communities? Abilene or Concordia?
It's KDOT funded. What our request, if you look at it, looks at, we try to, our total request to KDOT is 4.7 million. We know CityGo is 100% Salina, and we try to carve out as much of the para and the non-related Salina transportation. We try to carve that out. So our request to the city is based upon 2.9 million instead of the 4.7 million, which is our grant with KDOT. We know pretty much how to carve out what we're doing outside of Salina. We know with expenses associated with the Abilene services, the Concordia services, the 81 connection services. So we kind of, we're capable of carving it out. Salina is not funding any expenses associated with anything that's not provided within Salina.
So is there a cost accounting report on that or anything that we see as a city? I'll look at Mr. Scrag.
I give year-end financial reports. Of course, it's part of, transportation is part of OCCK, which is a regular complex financial statement. But I do slide it to Mike or Debbie, the balance sheet and income statement as it relates to, as at the end of every year. Again, it's hard to read to the degree that we get a lot of funding from a lot of different sources. As you know, Salina Regional Health Center gives us money. We contract with the three managed care organizations that the state of Kansas contracted with to provide non-emergency medical transportation to people who are developmentally disabled, but they also have to be eligible for Medicaid. So those are kind of statewide services that we provide, so. It's all, if you look at our income statement, it's kind of all together. It will show the numerous amount of funding sources we have.
Anyone else?
Or some, go ahead, girl.
I appreciate your commitment to accessibility. I just, I find myself wondering, when it comes to the paratransit and just economics being what they are, doesn't it seem that that and the Uber riding, the microtransportations, aren't they, wouldn't they, in a practical way, ravage the bus riding? When you can call and get a personal ride, why would I want to take the bus? So I'm just feeling a conflict right there. And then the other aspect I want to ask about is how do I, on behalf of the taxpayers of Salina, know that we're segregating the expenses for the citizens of Salina in that budget? I mean, you've got a new transit building. Was that, all that funding run through Salina? And are your buses for Abilene and Concordia now and 81 Link? Are they using that building? The training that you've got, is that all being funded? Is that new administration and those new positions, are they all being funded through Salina? Or is that cost apportioned out to the other entities? I mean, I guess I have to give you some credit for expanding your services through the area. But I think the taxpayers of Salina are seeing the expenses go up, particularly in the paratransit, and that's problematic to me as one foot in the bill.
Okay, one thing, let me define paratransit, especially within Salina. To qualify, you have to qualify to be eligible for paratransit, which means you have to have some kind of medical condition or some other condition that protrudes you from riding CityGo. There's an application we fill out. We look at the application, and we approve it or don't approve it. But in Salina, paratransit has to be, you have to be pre-qualified, and you have to be approved. And it's got to be based upon, generally, it's a medical condition or if it's more than a half mile or a mile, I can't remember exactly, from the nearest CityGo stop. So paratransit is, the people who ride paratransit in Salina really are unable physically or mentally, whatever reason, to ride CityGo. It's an FTA requirement, it's an ADA requirement, that we have to do that for people to qualify to ride para. I think we're pretty good. The answer, Commissioner Ryan, your other question, I think we've been doing this enough that we can kind of, we know what costs associated with Salina, what costs associated with 81 connection. 81 connection buses are garaged in Belleville. Abilene, they're garaged in, in Abilene. Concordia, they're garaged in Concordia. Non-emergency medical transportation vehicles, of course, are garaged here. There, so we try, we think we can, we think we have it down pretty good that we know the expenses associated. I have a cost center on 81 connection. I have a cost center on Concordia, I have a cost center on Abilene. So I know exactly what those expenses are. I know exactly what income we're getting from both KDOT and from the city of Concordia gives us, gives us a little of a match. Concordia came up just like two weeks' notice that they let KDOT know that they weren't no longer going to continue to do services within the city limits of Concordia. KDOT has a long history with us. They know that we're one of the few agencies across the state that would be able to jump in and take over that service. So in a matter of two weeks, we're going to start July 1, we're going to assume that role. We hired the local people that worked for the senior center. The match will come. It was a good thing, it couldn't be better timing, if it's true that KDOT is going to match the next eight months, seven months. So it's, because we were kind of scratching our head, you know, how we were going to do that. But I think we, I think our accounting, we pretty much know. Again, repeating myself, the whole KDOT application is almost 5 million. We used 3.5 million as far as associated with Salina, and take off to 70% there. The only part that you could say overhead that relates to other services would be training. Most of the training is done within Salina and at our, in our Salina facility. We don't have a facility in any other community that we can do this kind of training. Our training is extensive, detailed, complex. So we want to make sure that our drivers are adequately trained. But yes, our 81 connection drivers trained out of Salina. And is there some minor charge associated with them coming to Salina for training? Yes, there is. I don't think, you know, we track fuel, we track expenses for all of the services that are, you know, Salina, Abilene, Concordia, the whole thing. So again, we've been able to keep, I remember Commissioner Hodges asked me two years ago that, don't quit coming back with huge increases. So this year, we tried to keep it. We were fortunate enough, two things happened within the last year. And also, that allowed us to raise our starting wage to $15 an hour, which is almost a necessity for us to continue providing quality services. We just weren't getting the applicants. We weren't getting qualified applicants. It's amazing what that difference from going to $15 an hour did. Now, we were able to do that through two funding sources. The Kansas Legislature approved a 5% increase in DD funding, developmentally disabled Medicaid funding. And an increase in our contract with the MCOs for non-emergency transportation allowed us to do this. We look at drivers. We have 50-some drivers, the whole transportation department is like 75 employees. It's kind of company within a company. We consider drivers as direct service staff. So the $15 an hour starting wage only relates to direct service staff. It was tough, but we just had that opportunity. We kind of, we kind of, you know, lack of a better term, stuck our neck out there saying, you know, funding is going to have to continue once we start at 15. We can never go back down, but we think we have the funding, and we think the Medicaid funding is going to be in place with expansion. And Trell and her team, the MCO work we do for them, which helps with the match and helps us offset some of the expenses, so.
Thank you.
So Mr. Wallerius, you had mentioned the cost increases and those type of things. And the things that historically have contributed to that are service expansion or new initiatives, you know, adding a route, the storage building, those type of things. And with the things that you've identified going forward, do you see any of those representing cost increases to the city in the out years?
I cannot say no, but I don't think so. That's why we were able to keep 2022 funding the same as 20 and 21. We think some of our other services are going to pick up the match in the slack. And we are very grateful from what Salina supports it. I was talking to Commissioner Peck earlier, him and John Vaneer and Kay Crawford. And I can't thank the other two, who are the first commissioners that I came before that approved funding for this. So, and you know, it's increased obviously over time. The answer to your question, Mike, I don't, I don't see, I mean, obviously, we're going to have expenses increased. Lord knows where fuel is going to go. Probably our biggest, my biggest fear is what's going to happen to the cost of fuel staff. I can manage some of the other overhead items. I can manage fuel, I can't. We all know fuel has taken a huge increase over the last few months. Our budget is like a contract with KDOT. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, we submitted to KDOT in November, December. It doesn't take effect until July, because that's KDOT's fiscal year. So we're eight months out from the time we present our budgets to KDOT when it's actually, when actually it takes effect. But one thing about that agreement is, it is an agreement. They give us X amount of dollars, and for every reason, we go over that amount, it's 100% ours. We don't, we don't have any, it's just like a construction contract. If you're going to bid $100,000 to build stuff, and if it goes 110, you're not going to get paid 110. So, you know, we're kind of at the mercy, and we think we have it planned out good enough that that is not an issue, and we hope it never is an issue. But we are kind of committed to that. And I mean, I can, it's so convoluted with different funding sources. It's kind of hard to say, well, Abilene, I know what Abilene costs. I know what the income is. I know what expenses are. I know what Concordia income expenses are. I know what 81 connection income expenses are. Para, we pretty much know what part is Salina, what part isn't. The one thing about all of these services, or most of these services, especially the 81 connection, Concordia, the paratransit mainly, it benefits Salina the most. People aren't traveling from Salina to Concordia or Salina to Boy. People are traveling from Salina or from these surrounding communities to Salina. They're coming here for medical, they're coming here for shopping, they're coming here for whatever reason. for, for whatever reason. So anything that we do, expand services, really helps Salina more than you would think. Because it isn't, we're not, we're kind of, 81 Connection kind of helps out Belleville and Concordia and Minneapolis, but 90% of the people come to Salina. They're seeking medical treatment here, they're seeking shopping, they're doing, they're doing whatever. So it might look like we're doing a lot of services that's outside Salina, but Salina's is the one that's benefiting from this. Because these are, these are, this is where the people are coming. So, I mean, obviously, there's some that's not. We take, we take on the non-emergency medical, and this is part of, of course, Salina Regional Health funding, which we give the city credit for that, is, you know, we go, we go all over the state. We go to Wesleyan, Wichita, we go to KU Med Center. We go, we go anywhere that the MCO has asked us to do. So that's, but that, that we can kind of, we can kind of carve out. So, long answer, Commissioner Ryan, I'm sorry, but that's kind of, that's kind of where we are. I think we, I think we can do a pretty good job of segregating services and what, and what Salina should fund, and what, and what the other services or other communities fund. I'm fortunate that Salina is one of the few communities that's fun, public transportation. The city of Abilene does a lot of, does funding, you know, with KDOT. None of this would be possible without KDOT. I know Trell and her team is going to, their work cut out for them, especially for Concordia is to try to get the matching funds for that. So, you know, we, we really are kind of proud of ourselves for the confidence and faith that KDOT puts in us. Like I said, in a two-week period of time, we turned around Concordia, and we could do that anywhere. So, you know, the, the thing, we started with the hospital 20-some years ago, what we call Medavan, is still a model throughout the state. The other agencies in KDOT use this. So we've been, we've been on the forefront, and we've been a leader as far as public transportation. That means we expand services. Will we continue to expand services? I hope so. Should we ever be totally, really satisfied with what we're doing? No, no. But we keep that perspective in, as much as I appreciate the commissioners for the last 15 years or so, that's offered the fundness, that we know that we should keep our funding requests only to what would be, we consider part of, a part of Salina services. So, you want to add anything? I don't.
Yeah, so all of the, all of the data that we come with, my dispatchers can correlate exactly where people are going. So the numbers that I gave you, that is just for Salina. I did not include Abilene rides or 81 Connection rides in those, in those numbers. So what you're seeing is exactly, exactly what is coming from Salina, basically Salina to Salina, in, in those numbers. And so you really get to see the meat and potatoes of our business is serving people in Salina and creating accessible services. And Pat said it really well with your question with, well, microtransit, paratransit, how is that not going to take over CityGo? Well, in some places, they have recognized that their town is small enough that it can, and it's app-based, and it gives people that on-demand. Salina is so big that we would not be able to keep up with that demand, and people would not be able to get to where they're going. Not to mention, CityGo makes very, how do I, it makes a lot of financial sense to have people sharing the rides on CityGo versus individuals in vans. We're able to save on gas that way, we're able to save on driver payments, because I don't have people working a ton of overtime in that case. So we truly, we will always encourage people to take CityGo, because that makes the most financial sense for us, and it's also a really safe and easy option for them. Paratransit, like he said, that's our accessible option for people that can't make it to that CityGo stop, or for any reason are not going to be successful riding that fixed route system. So we go to their door and provide that amazing door-to-door service for them. He said it correctly, you have to apply for that as well. Microtransit, it's a pilot piece of our brain, so if it doesn't take off in Salina, it is not going to be a part of our budget going forward. That doesn't make sense to start something that people aren't going to want to use. They could, and that'd be really great, but I have to have the data to show that for you guys before we ask for money in that case. But it would fill a need for those hours that paratransit isn't running, to get people to work, back home safely, anything that, anything that they're needing. But always, CityGo, we love our CityGo, and it makes the most sense for people. So we'll always fuel people that direction.
A lot of microtransit, we've been having, industry, you can talk about this more, it's been asking us to provide services outside of our normal hours.
Yes.
We don't want to keep this going, we already exceeded our time, and I promised Debbie, but I know Swans is interested, I know we're looking at other companies that, that have different shifts, they don't, workers do not have places, they do not have, ride taxis as a choice, but it's not a very good choice. Not that against the taxi companies, but it's not a very good choice.
Sure.
So we thought, Trell and Michelle Griffin, our mobility manager, went to Kansas City and looked at their microtransit operation. It's, it's pretty slick. It's just, it's just, it's just a supplement to our, to our services. And again, we're, we put an application in, in the KDOT. There's a, we wouldn't not be asking the city of Salina a match for this first year. Again, as Trell said, it's a pilot. We don't want to commit to something long-term unless it's, unless it's really beneficial to, to the citizens. So we think, we think it will be, and as Salina continues to grow, unfortunately, well, right, wrong, or different, I don't know. We didn't make the 50,000, the whole transportation picture changes if we come in a metropolitan area, but that didn't happen, so we just know we're just talking about that. But I think there's a lot of interest from, from manufacturing in town to offer services over and above what, what we're currently doing.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I just had one quick follow-up question. In terms of just looking at the trends over the, since 2015, cap, or the fixed route expenses or budget items seem to be pretty, you know, pretty stable, but then we do have the jump in the paratransit from, basically, it looks like around 150,000 up to the 250 for 2022. And I just wondered, is, is that part of the microtransit that you were referencing? Or is, are people just becoming more aware of it and, and using it more? Is there some kind of an increased demand, or?
More of an increased demand than anything else.
Okay.
It's been going up. As I said earlier, public transportation, as far as fixed route services, really took a hit in 2020 because, because of COVID-19. Again, I said earlier, people were, were suggested not to ride public transportation, so that's really increased para. So we think that's going to continue, continue to follow through.
And, and thank you for remembering my comments from a couple of years ago, because, I mean, there was a 13% and a 10%, so getting less to 1% is appreciated.
Well, I think, well, I don't think, I know one of, one of the things that OCCK does, and does it quite well, not only transportation, but all of our services. Again, public transportation is only probably 10% of OCCK's total operating budget, so we're really diversified. But, but one thing we do, and we strive to do it well, and we just try to do it as best we possibly can, we, we think by expanding services, and, and it seems like KDOT, money that KDOT doesn't seem to be an issue anymore. I'm not saying it won't ever, but anyway, public transportation, it's been a lot of money allocated to public transportation. I think we're going to see even more changes coming within, with, within the next couple of years. I want to, I want to keep expanding as much as we possibly can to provide the services that I think the communities we serve, especially to the people in Salina that really need the services, that we will be able to continue to provide those and provide, you know, affordable and accessible transportation. So, that's my spiel.
Eric, can I ask one more question? You're going to think I'm a jerk for asking this. But, and don't get me wrong, I think OCCK organization is great. I know you serve people with disabilities and disadvantages in a much broader spectrum than just the transportation part. But once you're on the paratransit list, you fill out that application, are you on there for good, or is there other, do you have to fill out one periodically? What strikes me is, you know, I've got my card with a, I can park in the, the reserve spaces for people with disabilities, and, you know, you get healed eventually, and you don't need a medical service, you don't. But I see people parking those special spots all the time at the grocery store, so is there any turnover?
Absolutely. So that is something that I am reviewing with our dispatch coordinator. I want to make sure that we're providing the best service possible to the people that need it. And sometimes disability is temporary, and sometimes it is long-term. And so are we, are we recognizing those people that maybe have a broken leg, and they're not able to walk to the corner of their street on, on Santa Fe to wave down the yellow, but we've been picking them up? Are we still picking them up? So I am going to be combing through that information with, with her to make sure that these people are actually receiving the appropriate service that they need. So that is, you, you hit the nail on the head. That is something that we've identified recently as, man, we truly have opportunity to help people get to the exact right service. And the guide-and-go that I was talking about, sometimes people love paratransit because it's comfortable, it's easier for me to know one driver and rely on that one driver than take the risk and be on a bus with a small group of people. And so that, that travel training is going to be important in bridging that confidence gap, because maybe it started as a broken leg, and maybe now it, they're capable of getting to that stop, but they're scared. And so how can I best serve them? But that's going to start by evaluating the people that are currently riding and having those conversations. And that's not going to be a quick turnaround, because we've got, everybody has different, different things that prevent them or make them ride certain, certain services, but 100% that is going to be evaluated and addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you for your past support, and thank you for the funding for our, our new facility, partial funding. It's, we're looking at July, and we certainly, we will plan, along with KDOT and FTA, ribbon cutting, and we certainly will invite all of you, and hopefully you can attend, so.
Look forward to it, it's impressive. Mr. Schgreg, are you looking for direction, or Ms. Pack, direction from us in terms of where we want to be with the funding request on each one of these, or how do you?
Whatever feels most productive as a governing body. Certainly, if you want to deliberate and provide some feedback, that would be helpful. Ultimately, I think Ms. Pack's going to go over the timeline, but we'll bring back to you an issues and options punch list.
Okay.
We won't have a meeting next week because of 5th of July, so it'd be the 12th.
Right.
But any, any feedback you have today would be helpful.
Okay.
Keep it the way it is. Looks reasonable.
Yes, and as Mike said, we will be coming back to a final decision on the 12th on all of these requests. So if you're not ready to make that decision, or, you know, you want to have time to think about it, that'll be coming back on the 12th.
I guess, if you have questions or additional information, please share that for sure, so we can track that down.
Gotcha. No, I, I just, I do want to let OCCK know that I really appreciate the, the 0.8% increase, I do. Because we're going to see further on down the line, we've got, you know, we've got some difficult decisions of our own to make, and thank you for that. All right.
All right. So with that, move on to Salina Chamber of Commerce, Visit Salina. I won't go over a lot of this information, because I know that Sylvia will, will cover this in her presentation. I just did provide that information to the commissioners as backup information, so if you have any additional questions, I can try to answer those, but I'll let Sylvia and her staff come up and give, give their information.
Hello.
Hello.
Commissioners, staff. Sylvia Rice, I'm the Visit Salina Director for the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. If you want to just go ahead and pull up my stuff, Mr. Wood, that would be awesome. I'm going to start off with some just general information that's in your packet and that Debbie also provided for that matter. Our contract with the city goes back to 1977. It is our responsibility to administer a convention and visitors program on behalf of the city. I included in the packet the breakdown, the current breakdown and distribution of the 6.7% rate that we currently have underway. In that formula, we're at a 3% portion of that. Debbie also provided for you in the pack up where that new rate will be when we move to 7.75%. Want to just quickly point out the staff, in addition to myself, we have Tiffany Benin, who's our manager of sports and special events. Wave to the folks, Tiffany. And Joanne McClure, who's our manager of the conventions and military market. Would point out for you also that we are a three-person team now. We did reduce staff by two full-time positions during COVID. We are still at that point, and we would anticipate being at that point at least through 2022. Doesn't necessarily mean that the workload changed very much, it just looked a little bit different during COVID. And as we kind of go through the report, I'll, I'll kind of point out as we go what we did through COVID quickly, but more importantly, what we're doing now, and as we look ahead. Next slide, please. I want to talk about where we are. During the throes of COVID, certainly our staffing changed primarily, quite drastically. We depend entirely on what happens with tourism, obviously, and if you didn't notice, that stopped during COVID. And so certainly, our ability to conduct the normal programming that we would do stopped as well. And so we certainly switched gears, and this is sort of how it looked. I would talk about moving to the right. What that really meant was looking at events, conventions, all of those, certainly, the group activity, and, and moving those items to the right, and I'll talk about that a little more specifically in each market. We also sort of changed from very directly serving the clients, whether those are leisure travelers or group planners, and serving our local industry. We became intrinsically tied to the hotels, to the attractions, et cetera, to try to help them do whatever we could, to help them get people still in the doors. That included the creation by the chamber staff of the Salina Strong website, keeping track of what restaurants are doing delivery, who's doing curbside, what hotels are, are open or are partially open, and what they're doing for additional sanitation, all of those kinds of things, to try to push business toward them. And so that became an incredibly large part of what we did, was sort of that, that switch. When we look at the leisure market, which is where we were, when we look at the leisure market, certainly our paid advertising in 2020 went down to a minimum. Number one, we simply didn't have the budget to do a lot of advertising. And number two, the messaging was difficult. There were destinations out there that just kind of continued on with the whole, well, I've got a TV contract, I'm going to go ahead and run those, come see us, and we didn't want to do that. Not only were we trying to renegotiate those contracts, but also, the messaging had to be very, very low, low-profile, very soft sell. And it became more about, you know what? We're an awesome place, we've got great stuff here, when you're ready to get out and move and do stuff, we're ready to welcome you. And so certainly, our advertising looked very different. Now we're rebuilding, now we're getting back into the TV game, and now it's about, if you haven't seen Salina lately, you haven't seen Salina. And we're very enthused about all of the, and I'm going to say in quotes, "new things." A lot of them were new things before COVID, we just never got a chance to tell anybody about them. And so now we're promoting a lot of the new things that, that are available to our visitors in town. And we're coming back hard on, on broadcast, on print, social media, and all of the above. As you know, our budget is delayed, and so even though we're starting to see some things pick up, we're still a little delayed in the transit guest tax flowing, and so we are planning accordingly and kind of rising as we can, and, and pulling back where we need to. We are beginning to see leisure come back, which is really encouraging. And we're seeing some trends nationally. Pretty much all of the travel right now is domestic, and when you put that into a different scope, for us, that means a lot of our visitation is within the state. Although we are picking up on folks who are taking advantage of the drive market that weren't quite ready to fly yet, and we've seen some of that increase as well. The bottom line is, people want to do things, they want to go places, but there still is an element of trepidation among some travelers, and it's just going to take some time before we come back full bore. So we are in the midst of doing that reboot of the new, the things that are happening downtown, which I know SDI is going to talk about at length. New businesses, new restaurants, entertainment coming back. It's such a huge deal, that concerts are back at the Stiefel, that all of those kinds of things are available to our visitors, because that's what we're known for. The Cove is back open, sculpture tour continued, the changes in air service with, with Houston on the horizon. Those are all going to be very positive things, particularly in the leisure market. Slide. When we look at the convention and military markets, this is Joanne's bailiwick. And what I would say about that is that Joanne just refused to take no for an answer in 2020. So when you're talking about that sliding to the right, when she got a call from a venue that said, "The XYZ Association canceled," she'd say, no, they didn't. I'll call them, what dates do you have available next quarter, or in six months, or this time next year? And so we moved- And so we moved from where a lot of people were ready to say no, we're not coming, to no, let's not do that, let's get you on the books, let's get you planned, and saving that business. Because when they're on the books, it's more likely that they'll stay within the community and not start over with a whole rebid process. And we were really quite successful at doing that. Convention stopped, and then they sort of went digital or went virtual, and then they sort of went hybrid, and then they started to come back. And as of late March, early April, we started to see that business building back up again. Are we having as many conventions at this point? No. Are they as large as they were? No. But they're getting there, and that's the important thing, I think, to remember that attendance is coming along. The great news is, as 2021, as those moving to the right things are working out, it's getting filled toward the latter part of the year. So hopefully, it's, you know, if we don't have issues with any kind of a bounce back with variants and that sort of thing, 2021, 2022 looks pretty good in the conventions market. And kudos to the folks that host those conventions, getting through 2020 with the distancing and the additional sanitation and all that. TPEC and all of the hotels did an admirable job of trying to get those events done, and now they're ready to move on ahead. It's difficult to find available dates. Yay. That's a great problem to have. Big news again in conventions, a large insurance convention that we hosted for decades and left us because we didn't have an appropriate place for them to meet. They insisted on doing all of their events under one roof in the majority of their hotel rooms, and we couldn't do that any longer, and they went away. Well, this spring, they came back because they were willing to look at things differently, finally. And between the venue folks and Joanne, they put together a program that they bid off on, and they had a tremendous time here. They were at TPEC, which they would never even look at before. They were at TPEC and they stayed all across town, and they were in all parts of the community having a great time. And we were hearing over and over from the 300-plus folks that were here in June, I had no idea, I'm coming back with my family. And you can't buy that kind of marketing. So we're super excited about that. We have them penciled in for next year. Military events are currently on the 2021 calendar, and as of now, they are planning for 2022. I always say that with kind of a question mark at the end because it is the government and it is military. So that's what the plan is at this point. Equifest was back this year for year two, and next year they'll be back for year three in their three-year contract with us. Slide. When you look at sports and special events, that's where Tiffany Benin shines. And when you look at what happened during 2020 and moving into the current time period, the Fieldhouse closure cost several events, but booking started back up as soon as the doors were open. And that facility is as busy as we speak and continues to look to be doing really well through the rest of this year. The outdoor play for 2020, outdoor recreation play, baseball, softball, continued through an agreement between Keeps Salina Playing and Parks and Recreation. And the hotels were tremendously thankful because it made all the difference to some of them. And 2021 tournament play looks very, very robust. Got to tell you, with, you've all heard maybe as much about TERF as you ever want to hear. I don't know. But I'm going to tell you this, with the TERF addition at Dean Evans, we immediately booked two events, two brand-new events that had never been here before. The NJCAA Region 6 Baseball Tournament and also the American Legion A State Tournament. And so hello, that was great news. CAESIA events went kind of through all sorts of changes between 2020 and now. Again, kudos to those venues who were able to distance those state events when necessary. But baseball and softball were right back on to their regular footprint this spring, and that was tremendous, eight teams each. Of course, we had thunderstorms because it's state baseball and softball. You can kind of just count on that. Great news was, at Evans, we played right through, on time, no problems. At Bill Burke with softball, they delayed it one day, but they were still able to finish in a two-day format, which was tremendous. Those grounds crew did a great, great job getting that ready. And we also set an all-time high attendance at softball this year for that event being here. And KKO is back in July. And that's a huge, a huge indication of quote-unquote "normalcy" when it comes to tourism, I think. Go ahead and slide, Jacob. Just to give you a quick visual, this shows you back to 1990, the largest dips that the hotel industry has seen in occupancy and daily rate. It shows you where 9/11 was. It shows you where tourism took a big dive in '08, '09, and then it shows you what happened in 2020. So this was the worst decline in U.S. history, in this, in this industry overall. And I think that really shows it quite obviously. Slide. Where are we at right now? We tend to look at hotel performance. Sorry, I set myself a timer, Debbie. We tend to look at hotel performance to give ourselves an indication of how we're doing. And so just quickly, we took a snapshot of the month of April in 1920 and '21. Bottom line is that from '19 to '20, our occupancy dropped almost 68%. And in '21, our 45.5% occupancy rate was only 33% below '19, which is actually really pretty good news. They estimate that we're not going to see tourism come back to '19 rates or '19 levels until at least 2024. And so we're pretty encouraged by these numbers. Our average daily rate is only down 8.3% from 2019. And honestly, that was something we were fairly worried about at one point because it did become kind of a rate war. When you talk to the hotels, when we talk to the hotels, here's what they're telling us their challenges are. Like everybody else, our number one is hiring employees. They just can't find them. Number two is staff burnout. And that's because the general manager is now doing the night audit and possibly setting up for breakfast in the morning, and the front desk clerk may be helping clean the pool, and et cetera, et cetera. That's how they're all operating. People who have multiple hotel properties are just sharing staff. They also talk about the concern about more competition as more hotels seem to be on the horizon, and they're concerned about that. And the leisure trend that's changing is instead of people booking out their travel, it's sort of more like jumping in the car and let's do a quick weekend in Salina, and they're calling from an hour and a half out looking for a room. And so that's a bit of a challenge when it comes to staffing. The positives are, they're feeling really hopeful. The calls for business are picking up, and one hotel even forecasts that their GNC occupancy looks like it's going to be above 80%. So that is tremendous. Jacob? When you talk about the budgeting process, Debbie asked me to provide our income sources. Our income sources are to the transient guest tax and our program activities. Those are things like a sporting event where by hosting the event, maybe we're getting a percentage of the gate. To be honest with you, pretty much all the money that we take in in program activities turns right back around and goes back into that program. This year, we're budgeting for a $700,000 transient guest tax budget direct to our program. Debbie has budgeted slightly less than that, which is normal. We hardly ever budget exactly the same, but we're going to shoot for it. What's listed for CARM and KO are just the amounts that would be offshoots from that percentage that we're looking at. And so the total into the, our budget would be $700,000 with the rest of that being sort of a pass-through. Slide. And when you look at the expenses, quite frankly, what I did was I looked at '19, I looked at what we had done thus far in '21, and we worked from there and kind of met ourselves in the middle about what we thought we would be doing in 2022. Fund balances at the end of 2020. There are three specific fund balances that we share with you each year. Our Visits Salina Designated Funds at the end of 2020 was at just over $112,000. The Kenwood Oakdale was just over $80,000, and Cultural Arts Regional Marketing, or CARM, was at about $141,000. That was at the end of 2020. There have been changes since then, obviously, we're halfway through this year. But I would say that a couple of primary adjustments to those dollars would be in CARM. There will be a rebate back to the city per guidelines. That's somewhere in the area of about $60,000, so that will be coming. The designated funds on Visits Salina, I know that has come down also based on where we ended up with some later expenses into 2021. And currently, we're in the process of working on developing new guidelines for both of those funds, with the goal of potentially freeing up some dollars that could be redistributed another way by the city. So as far as what is our request, our request is, we've taken a stab at guessing what we think transient guest tax will do. But honestly, as I've told the city manager and others, our request is that we stay at the 3% that we've been at. We have always risen and fallen, depending upon what transient guest tax does. And we've been, I think, really good stewards of those dollars in looking at expenses and keeping a pretty tight hold on them, especially when it looks like things are not coming in exactly where we had budgeted. So I came close to the buzzer time, Debbie, but not exactly. But I would be happy to answer questions, and we're always happy to answer questions if you have them. Reach out to me or anybody on the staff, especially if it's concerning their specific areas.
Any questions for Ms. Rice? Okay. Well, first of all, I want to say thanks to all the Visits Salina team for dealing with a 40% staff reduction and yet still finding a way to at least consider the possibility of a $60,000 rebate to the city. Truly appreciate your hard work the last year, and hopefully we'll see a quicker recovery than what's anticipated.
That's what we're hoping for.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Mayor Hodges?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. If I could, I can't stress the importance of how hard these three folks are. And previously, those five folks were in that office as far as, you know, making that downtown Salina reality happen. I mean, these are the folks who are actually driving the, a lot of the expendable income that supports the sales tax downtown. They really work hard.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sylvia. And you did a great job of keeping to your timeline. The next agency that we'll hear from is Salina Community Economic Development Organization. I just provided in here the agreement that we have with SEVO. And just a reminder that the funding for this particular agency is on a three-year term. So what we set in 2022 will be what we kind of set for 2022, 2023, '10, 2024, provided information about where it began, where that funding began, and where those levels were. So I believe probably Mitch is in the audience, and he'll give you an update on what they've been doing. They've been doing a lot of work, and kind of where their request is this year. So, thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. It's good to be here, Mike. First off, I want to introduce, I've got two board members here. Pete Baumgarten is here and John Gunn, who represent there, somewhat hiding behind the pole back here, I think. But as you know, we've got a former mayor there, and he's been able to talk about, well, back win many times during our meetings over the last several years. I appreciate his guidance very much. And then also Robin Van Etten. Robin works with me, keeps me in line, does a lot of the heavy lifting in preparations of documents like you're going to see today. But it's exciting to be here. It's hard to believe that this is the third time that we've come before the commission. The first time was the formation year back in '16. And then you'll see later on how we've gone through our budgeting process. Like everyone else, it's been an interesting time this past year. We've been a little bit luckier than most that we've been able to survive and just kind of make a pivot on how we do economic development. In our segment, we talk about the different pieces of the pie or the legs of the stool. We talk about tourism, we talk about retention, we talk about recruitment. All those pieces are important, and we've got a lot of our partners here today talking to you all about funding. And this is something, the partnership is something I always want to stress. The chamber is very critical to what we do, the airport authority, the city staff. This is a team effort. So I'm going to get into what I've got because I know we've got a limited amount of time. We're going to run through these pretty quick, Jacob. So we're going to go on to the next one. The first project we want to talk about is the One Vision Aviation. This was October 26 when we did the ribbon cutting. You can go ahead and move on to the next one. This is just a little bit of estimates, the original estimates of what they expected. They did get up to somewhere around 75 to 80 prior to the COVID impact. At that time, you saw a huge increase of jets being stored at the airport, the regional jets that we get into Salina, the 50-seaters. They had estimated they wanted to be up around 250 the first year. Now, they got close to 100, and then unfortunately, they fell down to the 30 or so that they bottomed out at. Now we can say it's reversed itself. They are over or right at 250 with their current workforce. They see that number growing. They continue to estimate 450 is where they want to be at when they can get the people hired. So it's something that the chamber, through their programs, the airport authority, and we've been working with them, trying to find places for workers to live. This is not a surprise, something you haven't heard, housing is a critical issue. And for this project, this company is one because they are literally bringing in people from all over the country to, that have experience as airframe and power plant mechanics, people that are specialists in this field, that do make a good income in their income. And they're basically in a 24 and up range is where they're going toward. The base rate is a little over $21, depending, that's counting all the positions. So they see this growing. As you can see, go ahead and move on a couple, the next slide. It's a little bit, you can get some reading later tonight, but they had been up, as it said here, to the 250, and then currently 250, and then are headed to the 450 range. Go ahead, the next slide. This is a quote and some pictures from a couple, the announcement out at the airport. But if you go by there, and I encourage you to go by and see what the aircraft they have out there, it's reassuring to me the amount of checks airplanes have to go through to be ready to fly. Heavy checks, I've learned more in the last year about the requirements that Jim Sponder and his company has to do to make these airplanes certifiable, to be able to fly. So that's reassuring as a user of our aviation industry.
Mr. Robinson, if I could just interject with just a couple of questions in terms of the employees, and certainly I don't need this information today, but maybe in the days and weeks ahead, it would be helpful to have. So out of the 250 employees that One Vision has at this point, are we looking at, like, those are all 250 employees and their families that are relocating to Salina? You mentioned some of them coming from across the country, are these contract employees? And of the remaining 200 that they hope to add, you know, just in terms of planning with, you know, with our housing plan that we're doing, what's the percentage of employees that are realistically going to be locating here versus the ones that are, say, coming up from Wichita and spending the week at a, you know, like a long-term hotel or living in some kind of a, you know, mutual dorm situation?
They actually were having people sleep on other employees' couches.
Right, right, right.
That's what the story that was going around. I'd be more than happy to get that information right off the top of my head. I don't have that.
Yeah. I didn't expect you to.
But we'd be glad to. And it's something, it's really made a huge impact on K-State. Their A and P program has gone from having eight students to double, triple digits. I don't know what the current number was, but I know it's really changed how their enrollment has gone, and it's helped the college tremendously. But I'll get those numbers, and I know Eric has worked with that, but we'll get those to you.
Thank you.
And we know Lauren, and some of that information has been provided to Lauren, but we'll get more details for you.
Thank you.
Glad to. Next up, and let me, one of the things that's really exciting, the state of Kansas has recently been given the Golden Shovel Award, which is an economic development award. And it's been, we've been named the top state in the mid, upper Midwest, which is the first time in many, many years. And that's based on the job numbers, the investment amounts. There was five projects that have been picked by There was five projects that have been picked by the state to go and promote to consultants and other companies when we go out and make these visits with, with companies. A lot of that now is being, still, still is being done via electronic formats. And out of those five projects, it was great to hear, two of them were here in Salina, this project, Tony's project, and then the Great Plains project. So out of the whole state, that was something pretty proud, and this was being promoted to consultants, people that handle projects. So it's, it was kind of exciting and gratifying for us to hear, you know, the relationship we have with folks in, and Topeka is critical for the growth of the community. So Swans, this was August 10th, was kind of a weather day like the last few days have been. That day was pretty warm. Commissioner, I think you were probably sweating it up there with all the, the big wigs there. But the next page, let's go ahead, we'll run through these pretty quick, you all have seen these. The black shaded area, that is the building, the 400,000 square feet. I was lucky to get a tour of that a week ago, this past Friday. And the building walls are pretty much 90% done, other than the very south end. And at that time, there was about a third of the roof already on, and probably now half of the roof is on, if they were able to make the progress rates that they'd been having. Currently, there's about 100 construction workers. And once they get that building enclosed, that number is going to go up pretty quickly to about 450 workers when they get all the equipment in the building, setting that, doing the wiring, doing the plumbing, all of that. We'll see another surge in hotels for people here from all over that, that are in the, the construction industry. So we're excited about that. As part of this project, as you all know, it was a $600 million investment by the company. It'll be spent over several years, adding the new equipment, the two production lines that will be making, we, I heard this number the other day, they will be producing a truckload, a semi-truckload, that's a 53 footer, the big ones, a truckload of pizza an hour. So that's how fast these two, two new machines are. So a lot of pizza being made here. At 400, a $600 million investment was also, as you all quite aware of, the, the city was able to get a $3.8 million EDA grant and then also a $2.1 million KDOT grant, all for drainage work, street and transportation improvements related to the project. So we're excited about being able to bring in that outside money into the community. Next, please. Just, okay. Here's, here's the investment numbers I talked about, the job numbers. Currently, they are at the 1,200, and we'll be adding the 42 year or two, and then I'll wrap up with the 183, which will total right at 225 new jobs. Next. Just a couple of pictures. This is the, the south end of the building. That's, that's an old picture. That's pretty much all finished up now, and I'd encourage anybody to go down. Very unique construction. They brought in insulated concrete forms from Kansas City. One trailer load would take one form, so they trucked those in here and had them up that day or the next day, whenever it arrived. So interesting concept, but quite efficient in terms of the building insulation, keeping everything nice and cold. Okay, go ahead, next. And then the same week on, I think it was on Thursday, the same week that Swans announced, we had our Great Plains announcement. They are acquiring the former Signify building and will be, as of the end of next month, will be acquiring, fully acquiring the building and doing, starting the transition. This is for the new track loader. This is part of the construction equipment investment that Kubota is making with Great Plains. They, we will be seeing a extension of, of new construction equipment that they're bringing from Japan to, to Salina, and we're quite excited about their plans. The investments was about, as you see here, $53 million with the acquisition, and that'll be a long-term situation filling that building. They will not be filling that up immediately. It'll be a, over a several-year period. As you see, at the year four, there'll be another 250 to 300 workers coming in. I think we've all heard a little bit more about that. It's quite, quite a investment by the company. And much like Swans, when you have a, a new company take over local ownership, and you see this kind of investment, that's very reassuring that they've made a long-term decision to support the, the company, which is always, you know, it's always a question mark. On the last page, you just see there's a couple more pictures of the ground, the announcement there that was made at Great Plains headquarters. Let's go ahead and move, move ahead. There we go. Changing subjects, one of the efforts our organization's geared to is, is attraction, but also we've been tasked, along with the chamber, jointly to be working on entrepreneurship. This was our startup event back in September of 18 with our startup Salina. Over the time, before COVID, we had rotated between morning meetings and evening meetings with a lot of different local successful business people. As you can see there, that was Todd, Todd Welsh, that was the speaker that morning. And it's, it's been exciting. Now, we're trying to reboot, as we're calling it. Right now, we've been away for so long, we're trying to get some speakers lined up, and hopefully this, this next month, we'll have our first one coming in. Now, go ahead and run through these next ones, Jacob. Go ahead, just some additional, I don't want to really waste, not wasting time, but y'all have got a full, full agenda here. So that was for several sponsors, Evergy, SS&amp;P, ISG, and then First Bank, all helped sponsor that program for the first two years. And we'll be going out and getting more sponsors, and then that's some of our partners. Over the last couple of years, we've had with SCORE, SBA, Dane Hansen Foundation, the temple is where we host our meetings. Okay, next. Strategic planning, something we've done, was one of the initial early-on activities during the first, first, really first two years. And, and then we, go ahead. And we've just finished up, and we are waiting to get our final updated version of our strategic plan, and that'll be going out to each of you all where you can look at, see what we've got planned for the next year. And let's go to the next one, or one more. Okay, so this is what we're talking about for 2021 and beyond for the next three years. What a surprise, housing is top of the list. So we've been very, very pleased to be included in the city's plans, working with Lauren Driscoll, and we, we hope to bring to the table more and more potential partners that could come forward to the city and hopefully have some considerations, some projects that would help, help with the housing needs we have, whether it be single-family or multi- apartment living for residents, to help with not just the workforce, but also for everybody else who needs more improved housing here in the community. So this is something that as soon as the, the plan is, is complete, which I know we're very close to, we'll be reaching out to builders, contractors in the state, including out to Kansas City, Wichita, others, trying to see, is there somebody here that has an interest in coming and doing developments or projects here? We're already, as you all well know, we're getting that sort of interest, but I think we can continue to, to build up potential partners that would look at Salina. Workforce development continues to be a, a critical issue. We're in support of the Imagine Salina campaign that the chamber is involved with. We were in support of them, and, and we'll work with them in any way we can to continue to help attract more workers. The childcare availability and affordability is another issue that, that we've been a supporter of. We're not, we're not the front group on that, but we want to be very supportive of all those organizations that have that as a day-to-day calling for their, another critical issue. Certified sites, that's another effort that we will be doing this, this, end of this year and the next, getting our sites, what they call shuttle-ready by the state of Kansas, where we know where our sites are positive. We've got good sites here, it's just a matter of going through some of the new steps they've submitted to, to get these projects up and going on a quicker speed has got to be a bigger and bigger issue for the companies that are looking to, to build these days. Last time I was here, just a couple of weeks ago, we talked about industrial revenue bonds, and the city manager and I have talked with that, and I've submitted some things to him already for possible formats. Our commissioner, who's traveling, we don't have something we can push a card in and pop out an answer, but I think we've got some, some good opportunities, alternatives that we can look at and come up with some additional responses in terms of how we go about working with, with industrial revenue bonds and how you, you know, decide how much and for how long. The last page, the last page is the finance page that we'd submitted for what we've done over the last, well, since 2016. You can see at the three-year blocks of how the funds, the first, the first three years, and then the second three years, we did not ask for an increase. During that time, we stuck with our amount at 250,000. This year, we've asked for a $25,000 increase, going from 250 to 275. The county has already approved their, their, our budget request to them. They went from 20 to 35,000. The airport authority has not made a decision on their funding yet, and then are in kind with the airport authority, I mean, with the chamber for our, our space, that, that won't change. So at this point, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Maybe somebody, two chairmen, past chairmans would answer, if there's anything for them as well.
Any questions for Mr. Robinson?
No?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just had a couple. You made a reference to putting, putting in information and getting out a, a card with results, and I don't know if that was a reference. I know that I specifically had requested a hope that at some point we would get some sort of development or guidelines for economic development incentives that we offer, whether that looks like IRB or CIDs or whatever, so that we can at least do some analysis in terms of the amount of private investment that's being made, say, the amount of jobs that are coming in. I mean, are, are there any plans to, at least philosophically, put together some guidelines so that we can be making consistent decisions in the future and not bringing, treating each application as something that's just freestanding on its own?
Yeah. Well, we've had, yes, the, the, first off, the answer is yes. The, the programs that we've developed, we've reached out, I've reached out to my counterparts in about 10 communities. We've also talked with the lady that works with Gilmore and Bell. They are going to be providing some as well. I don't know if Mike's gotten anything from her yet or not, but I know she was working on that last week when I, when I talked to her. So yeah, the intent is definitely to put some things together and look at a comparison. The industrial revenue bonds, looking at what I've received so far, it's a lot of the very similar, I mean, the, the job, jobs, wage numbers, that sort of thing is still very similar. One of the communities that I've liked the best, how they've staggered theirs, it's, it's based more on if you, if you're investing so much, there's percentage. And then if you've got so many jobs, it's the same thing. It's a, it's a combination, the more jobs you have, the higher the percentage is.
Right.
But that, that would definitely be part of it. A lot of what we're seeing, though, is, is the callbacks as well, something that's discussed in the last couple of projects. You know, the, we've had three projects, three IRB projects. Now, we've got some housing projects are going to be coming along, so that's, that'll increase that volume. But we can definitely, we can, we are definitely putting together some items, and, and that, Dr. Davis was the one that made the comment about the, putting in the Q, the card in one end and the answer coming out. Well, that was for you, Dr. Davis. But we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get that, and, and I feel very comfortable with what we can come up with some responses that the commissioner will.
Thank you. I appreciate it, because I know other communities have developed, have their own guidelines, and, you know, obviously, we want to develop something that is specific to our community, but, you know, I'm sure that there are a lot of commonalities. And also, I know that we're always going to have to exercise some element of discretion when taking a look at that, but thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Robinson? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Y'all have a good afternoon.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you for that. That puts us into our next one, which is Salina Downtown, Inc., and I think they also have representatives there. Information I did provide was there's a few sources of, of funding for Salina Downtown, Inc., and I'm sure they'll cover this. Besides the supplement, which is the operating supplement that the city has provided in a facade grant amount annually, the SBI does collect fees from their members downtown, and they recently were approved under the Downtown CID to receive 40.6% of that collection for the maintenance of the new downtown. I provided that, that collection to date for you, with about $89,000 through May of 2021. The piece of information I did not provide in your packet, but I have available is, there's also a portion of the Downtown CID that is allocated for existing retail improvement, and that's 18.9% of the collection. And I just wanted to give you the information that the balance in that particular fund is a little over $41,000 for it, so it's existing retail improvement. So with that, we'll ask the representatives from Salina Downtown, Inc. if they would like to come forward and tell us a little bit on what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Pack.
I'm Mike Wilson. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for Salina Downtown, Inc., and with me today is Cassie Stright. She's our vice president of the board, and Leslie Bishop from the office, who I have to say we're very thankful. We've got her on staff right now as we experience turnover with our executive director position, so we're very thankful to have her. Jacob, I think he's got our presentation here. It's just the video.
Okay.
There's supposed to be music, I believe, accompanying the slides to the video, and I'm not going to sing, so. Just a general overview of Salina Downtown, Inc. reopening, quote unquote, after the pandemic. We can sit here and talk about the pandemic all day, but we all know about that. Obviously, the mission for Salina Downtown is to support our merchant members. Obviously, the mission for Salina Downtown is to support our merchant members, BID, dues bang members.
Jake, if you could play it without the music, it's fine.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Kind of a general overview for the video. Obviously, like I said earlier, we're reopening. It's the hopes for our organization to add more programming, sort of a big splash for our retailers and our merchant members. Welcome back to Salina Downtown. Obviously, the redevelopment took place, that all of our merchants experienced, you know, the growing pains of the construction project, and then right after that, the COVID shutdown and restrictions. So we hope to add new programming, bigger events with our First Friday offerings from May through October. And then, obviously, a big piece of why we're here today is the facade grant. We feel is important for SDI and our existing merchants, just because it's huge for new development, bringing new businesses, new property owners to downtown, but also, you know, retaining tenants and, you know, offering some assistance to help spruce up the aesthetic of downtown, but also, there we go. But also improve existing structures within the downtown district.
You want me to start it over? I think I can do it.
Please do.
And apologies to Ms. Pack, because I am seeing that we are not going to come anywhere close to getting through our whole packet today.
That's okay.
I, please do.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
I think we can just keep rolling and then...
Well, okay.
If you want to do a little dance. That'll be dancing.
Way to go. So two items that we asked for increased funding, I think, that are in front of you is $55,000 in operational expense from the city, and then $75,000 for facade funding. The facade grant was frozen, I believe, last year for 2021, so we're unable to provide that grant to any existing merchants or future merchants. I can say that there were some before and after photos on the video, and we did go through 2020's allocated budget for the facade grant within the first five and a half months of 2020. So it is a real successful program that actually does drive some development within the downtown, and the vast majority of those products, excuse me, those projects, the work was done by local service providers. I can just provide some examples. Glass Services and the great work that they do, Pontons Construction, Accurate Electric, Gleason Signs, Restore Properties, obviously, has done a lot of really big facade improvement projects downtown. So those are just some of the examples of sort of local business generation that also happens with the facade improvement grant program.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wilson or Ms. Stright?
And the facade dollars have to be used on the outside of the building only, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So whether it be the front or rear elevations, or in some cases, if it's a three-sided building on a hard corner, yeah, absolutely, outside of the building. And there's two separate grant programs. One's the mini grant, which is up to $3,500 project cost, which I think you're all aware, which is a two-to-one match. And then the larger forgivable loan is for every $1.50 spent by the applicant, the grant provides them a dollar in assistance.
The most of those have been used immediately on Santa Fe, or is anyone applying?
We do have some that have taken place on Seventh Street and Fifth Street, so it's all within the actual downtown district, but, yeah, the vast majority have taken place on Santa Fe. And then Iron Street as well. I know the Flower Nook had a smaller mini grant that they used, but, yeah, you're right, the most have been on Santa Fe.
Could I clarify something really quickly with Ms. Pack? So the SDI maintenance fund has approximately $90,000 in it, and then separately, in the existing retail account, there's $41,000? Just wanted to...
We have paid out the $89,000 SDI and the maintenance. That gets paid out for them monthly.
Okay.
There have been no applications in the existing retailer improvement CID portion that, yes, has about a little over $41,000.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ryan, I didn't mean to interrupt. I don't know if you had other questions.
No, that was fine. It just occurs to me there's a few buildings on Fifth and Seventh that I'd like to see apply, and I wish you'd go twist their arms a little bit.
Send me a list. We'll see if they want to do the projects.
Is the maintenance, is the maintenance fund being used to fund the part-time employee that is helping to keep downtown clean, or is that part of the...
No, that's, no, that's part of the payroll budget for the office.
Maintenance is paid for trash pickup.
Oh, it is?
Mm-hmm.
We did contract with an outside service provider to dump the trash from the black trash receptacles, that that is part of the...
I've noticed, because that was taken over from the city, because the city used to do that, and that's now being done by SDI.
That's correct.
Aside from, like, the trash pickup, what else is coming out of the, like, the downtown maintenance fund? Do you have any?
The flowers.
The flower pot, the flower pot contract, and what else is it?
I mean, service that needs to be done to our truck from here on out comes out of maintenance, a key to our equipment, things like that.
Okay, so maintenance of materials and stuff like that?
Correct.
Okay.
And the eligible uses are that are covered by the transfer agreement that we entered into with SDI, so it kind of spells out those parameters. What's relatively new in terms of revenue being in place, and there was a dollar amount that had to be accrued and exceeded to go back to the developer, the master developer, before any money flowed to SDI. So it's relatively new in terms of timing it being available to SDI, and we're still trying to settle in to see what that number actually turns out to be on an ongoing basis.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That's correct. That payment, that payment out to SDI did not begin until October of 2020. After that, a balance was proved. I will clarify on the facade budget for 2021, the direction that we received from commission a year ago was that we were going to put a placeholder in the 2021 budget, and that we were going to revisit that in 2021. We, so we do have those dollars set aside, so that's part of the discussion that we'll have when we come to issues and options, is whether we release that. We had $47,500 set aside for 2021, and if we do that, then what that might do for their 2022 request.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
How far do you think we can get in terms of, where's the...
One thing you might want to do is just take citizen comment in case anyone is here to speak on any of these items, so ensure that we cover that, and then I'll defer to Debbie to kind of walk you through what information we can get through in the remaining time.
Okay, great. All right.
And if you would like, we just have one more slide that shows other outside agencies, and that would kind of complete that whole section.
Okay, let's go for it.
So we do, so we do provide $20,000 every year per agreement with the Salina Municipal Band. We provide maintenance for the Salina Arts Center and Salina Community Theater, and you can see kind of where those dollars have been historically. And as you know, we've been having some discussion about Salina Media Connection. We've been given instruction to bring the service of the meetings in-house, so that, and I know we'll be coming back to you today also, so that's just another outside entity that we are providing funding for. So that, I just want to put that in the conversation, and then we can go to public comment, and then probably pick up the rest of this next week. I think the information provided to you gives you enough detail to go into what we'll be talking about next week unless you have specific questions tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Pack. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak in regards to the agencies that we've discussed today? And just to refresh your memory on what those are, we've talked about funding requests from OCCK, Visit Salina, the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, and Salina Downtown, Inc., as well as the last slide that we displayed up there, the Municipal Band, and the Salina Community Theater and the Salina Arts Center. So if we have anybody that wants to speak to the funding of the outside agencies, this is your time to come up and let us know how you feel. Note takers and note takers online? All right, well, then, I will return to this. Do you want to try to get into any of the capital improvement plans?
The last we have to cover next week, so Debbie, you might go ahead and cover what you can.
Yeah, I think we can probably get through, I will go through everything that's on here. The capital improvement requests are pretty minimal for this year. We've talked about the Salina, or the relocation of Fire Station Four. We're recommending in the 2022-2026 capital improvement plan that we only fund the design of that in 2022, and that goes back to the whole timing issue of how those projects are designed and then built and then funded, so that that pushes that funding off from a permanent basis down a couple of years and kind of ties better with our debt financing schedule that we're trying to get through. The other thing that's on here that I would note would be the second construction phase of the Smoky Hill renewal, Smoky Hill River renewal. We know that's not on time, because we haven't started construction for the 2021 section, so we just have that in here just because that's kind of the timeline that we have in previous plans. The rest of these are all annual allocations that we've done for high bike trail parks and streets. There were three projects that we've discussed during strategic planning and during our discussions of excess fund balances for the facility maintenance building, the fire hoarding system, and then we had, we brought into the conversation the public works building. Just things to look forward to and kind of, in those discussions of those excess funding, we did discuss a couple of those smaller projects in there. So that kind of is the CIP plan for 2022 to 2026. This will actually be, come back to you probably in the fall for formal approval. It doesn't necessarily affect the operating budget for 2022, because it's all either financed, other than the cash portions, and those will come back in those operating budgets. Then what we wanted to provide you, take us when we move it on to the payroll section, which is Slide 11, just background information on papers and KPNF rates. They didn't increase significantly, so we don't anticipate that those are going to have significant increases on our fund balances or on our budget for 2022. On the next slide, we provide kind of just the basics of what are some of those costs that are associated with personnel. Often times, we think of personnel and we think salaries, but there's a lot more to it. Every time you raise a salary, you raise an overtime rate, you might raise shift differentials or anything like that, so that's information we just wanted to provide so that you can see how, when we have these conversations about salary increases, kind of what gets offset and what other things we have to take into consideration when we calculate those figures. The next slide is actually the staffing table. The table on the right or left is what was authorized in 2021, and you can see we had total staffing of 491 employees that included mostly full-time, but some classified and regular part-time. This does not include seasonal part-time, which is a lot of our mowing, our lifeguards, our rec employees, those types of employees, those are considered seasonals, so are not part of our authorized staffing table. The recommendations and some of the things we've seen since the 2021 authorization are the two additional positions in the city manager's office, one for the assistant city manager, and then one for a multimedia specialist. We have one for a multimedia coordinator, but that's being offset by the engagement coordinator that we have, so that's two new positions. There's one reduction in municipal court for a deputy court clerk. There's two additions in police for two dispatchers. Two and a half is the net in parks and recreation. They take, took the supervisor and exchange that for a park tech, and we're also recommending to add two custodial staff. And then six and a half reduction in public works, and that's in sanitation, directly related to the automated sanitation, where we're able to take less, we won't have runners in some of those instances. So overall, the effect of the staffing table for 2022, that sets us at a negative one net change, which then authorizes 490 positions in the staffing table. Just to move along, and just to have questions, we can go back over this probably next week when we talk about these decisions going forward. This is just information on what we've done in the past as far as pay plan increases. As you can see, it was all over the place. For a while, we weren't doing anything. For a while, we tried to do both COLAs and merits, and I will just remind you that a COLA, which is the cost of living, is given to every employee regardless of how long they've been here or where they are in their salary range, typically on January 1st, but it doesn't have to be on January 1st. It could be any point of time during the year. A merit is given based on performance, and that is usually typically a range of zero to... There's two additions in police for two dispatchers. Two and a half is the net in parks and recreation. They take, took the supervisor and exchange that for a park tech, and we're also recommending to add two custodial staff. And then six and a half reduction in public works, and that's in sanitation, directly related to the automated sanitation, where we're able to take less, we won't have runners in some of those instances. So overall, the effect of the staffing table for 2022, that sets us at a negative one net change, which then authorizes 490 positions in the staffing table. Just to move along, just have questions, we can go back over this probably next week when we talk about these decisions going forward. This is just information on what we've done in the past as far as pay plan increases. As you can see, it was all over the place. For a while, we weren't doing anything. For a while, we tried to do both COLAs and merits. And I will just remind you that a COLA, which is the cost of living, is given to every employee regardless of how long they've been here or where they are in their salary range, typically on January 1st, but it doesn't have to be on January 1st, it could be any point of time during the year. A merit is given based on performance, and that is usually typically a range of 0% to 3%, and that is given to employees based on their performance valuation, and is not given to employees who have reached the top of their salary range. So that's why we kind of look at those two in two different aspects as far as what they might affect. And as we budget those, we can budget a COLA all at once, which is typically given all at once, and then merits, we kind of have to budget throughout the year based on when people's actual anniversary dates happen. So the next slide, we tried to give you an estimate of what different options might be for salary increases, and we've included salaries and benefits, so this is the taxes and the other items that I mentioned earlier. We've given you four options, the dollar amounts applicable to four options, which is a zero merit, zero COLA, two merit, zero COLA, zero merit, two COLA, and a two merit and a two COLA. And as you can see, at the very bottom is the estimated total cost over all funds of each of those options, and that's the increased cost to those funds goes from zero to a little over $820,000 at the 2% merit, 2% COLA. There are many other options out there that you might want to consider, and we could certainly give you those amounts and what those costs might be. That's probably the biggest discussion part we might want to have at this point. And then the last slide just gives you kind of where we're going to be. Because we have to provide the county by July 20th, whether we're going to go over the revenue neutral rate, July 12th, we'll need to make some of these funding decisions so we can see where the, specifically the general fund will end up, so that we can determine whether that property tax levy is going to be at the revenue neutral rate or something other than that rate. If you choose that that's going to be higher, then we will need to notify the county, we'll need to set a budget hearing date that we need to have, to then we'll give them the maximum mill rate. So we'll do, make all those kind of decisions on July 12th. July 19th, we hope to come back to you with those decisions with a final budget draft, and during that, July 19th, actual commission meeting, we will have to set the maximum mill rate and schedule a public hearing date, so that we can meet that July 20th deadline to the county. Now, the calendar goes very, two very different directions depending on what that decision is, and I didn't want to go there until we had that decision, so if there's any questions or comments or any other additional information we can get to before July 12th, be glad to take that now, and we'll try to get it for you.
Thank you, Ms. Pack. Any questions regarding personnel?
Commissioners, I would tell you, staff's been working very diligently on trying to get as accurate as possible a cost estimate for personnel expenses, just as we try to come up with a balanced budget and determine the affordability of COLAs and merits, getting that baseline expense is difficult, given some of our financial and software challenges we've had in years past, but we're trying to dial that in, we're trying to dial in sales tax revenue projections, and we've talked before about, these are pretty uncertain times and lots of differing variables contributing to that projection, and then also looking at, you know, cost savings in terms of reductions of expenditures and reducing expenditure requests. So I don't want to, it's a little too soon to say, but we're still trying to work those to try to bring back to you a balanced budget that can support COLAs and merits if at all possible.
When do you anticipate, I know we've talked about this quite a bit in the past, and it hasn't risen quite to the top of the list yet, but in terms of doing the pay study that we've been talking about, because something I would like to not do is get so far behind on where we need to be in paying our employees, that when those recommendations come to us, you know, that we don't have a $2 million annual sticker shock or something like that.
We've put out requests for proposals, we've received responses, we've conducted initial interviews, and so as we've talked about the budget timeline, we don't expect to have that by the time you adopt this budget, it'll probably come mid-budget year, but our hope is that as we settle in a little bit more in terms of everything from accommodations and travel and those type of things, when we have the pay plan recommendation coming in and a cost allocation associated with that, we can also kind of visit our financial performance. If we have any growth at all, we might be able to apply that growth to implementing that pay plan.
Mayor Hodges, if I could just ask a piggyback question. Have there ever been any theoretical scenarios, what our payroll would look like if we adopted a minimum wage of $15 an hour?
We have not run that number, to my knowledge. Part of it becomes the question of compression adjustments across the, all the pay ranges. If it was just, you know, that being the minimum pay rate, that's probably an easier calculation to make, but I don't know that that's how we would ultimately implement it.
Just a Saturday evening exercise if you had nothing to do one week.
I'd be happy to delegate that.
Oh, darn it, Ms. Fisher's still here. Whoops.
I do think that that's a topic of conversation for the pay plan consultants, for sure.
And I just, I know we need to take a quick break before the meeting, but one final question, just because I know it's come up in the past. Seeing that we are eliminating seven sanitation worker positions, we're not firing seven sanitation workers, we're not letting them go, just as those positions, yeah, zero, just as those positions have become open, we haven't filled them, so it shows as a net decrease, but it's not like when we get our automated system, seven people are going to be using their, losing their jobs, so I just wanted to make that clear.
We've been filling those with a temp service, and in fact, we've had some conversations about whether any of those temp employees might merit transitioning into other openings in the organization.
Thank you. In that case, we will resume in here at 4:00, in case anybody needs to take a break. All right, it looks like we are good to go. I will call to order the June 28, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting, and first confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been given.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll proceed to roll call.
Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Peck?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Would all who are able please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we, first of all, can everyone hear me okay? Because I understand that there was, can you hear okay now?
Yes.
All right.
I hate to be the standard.
Okay, so anyway, yeah, there's a troublemaker that evidently can't hear very well, but as long as everybody else can, we'll keep going with this. Awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, recognition of the month of June 2021 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Brandy Bohm, D-VAC, will read the proclamation.
Hello.
I'm Brandy Bohm, and I am the Elder Abuse Program Manager for the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, and June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month, whereas according to the National Council on Aging, 1 in 10 seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic and sexual violence, financial exploitation, and neglect, and whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men, and are usually family members, caregivers, health care workers, or other trusted individuals, and due to the shame, fear, and other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get help they need, and whereas elders throughout the United States lose an estimated $2.6 billion or more annually due to elder financial abuse and exploitation, such as the illegal taking, misuse, or concealment of funds, property, or assets of a senior for another's benefit, and whereas too often elder abuse threatens the livelihood of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential, and increases their risk of death by 300% compared to seniors who have not been mistreated, and whereas Salina's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings, and whereas we all have a responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable and older adults, and must work toward ending elder abuse by assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of elder abuse. Now therefore, the City of Salina Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2021 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Salina, and urges all citizens to work together to help protect elder adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation, because it is imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bohm. Do you have any events going on this month to increase the awareness of elder abuse and the potential for elder abuse?
So we have done presentation, it's the end of the month, so it's kind of reporting on what we have done, but presentations, and we've also visited the senior center, which will now be ongoing, not just in June, but each month. I've kind of talked with Rosie, and we'll be, our staff will be going there once a month to continue our information on elder abuse and to reach out to them so that they know that they can come to D-VAC. Kind of worth mentioning, D-VAC has recently started an elder abuse program, and so it doesn't just fall under our sexual and domestic violence, and we have partnered with Recover Care, which owns long-term care facilities in eight of our counties, including Saline County, and we will be able to utilize them if we can't house them in our safe shelter due to their needs, so that can, not only the elder who may have dementia and be suffering from abuse, but also maybe somebody with special needs, or somebody who has received maybe some physical trauma and has to go for maybe long-term care for recovery for their physical needs due to their domestic or sexual violence.
Wow.
And so we are able to pay if they don't have the insurance needed to cover for that, we are able to pay a daily rate, we've come to an agreement on a daily rate, so D-VAC's elder abuse program will be able to pay for that for the client.
Wow. That's all, that all sounds absolutely wonderful, and thank you so much for your hard work on behalf of our elder citizens, and I have a signed proclamation for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Bohm. That will bring us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that doesn't appear on today's agenda. I would request that you keep your remarks to three minutes, and identify yourself by first and last name, and let us know where you're from.
I'm Horace Manal, Salina, Kansas. This pertains to government. For every action, there's an opposite and equal reaction. In view of the Supreme Court ruling last week, free speech has been, has opened the If our elected officials, government officials, were held accountable for their actions, their abuse and their power, then maybe we can move forward, but until we start holding our elected officials, government officials accountable for their actions, we can't move anywhere. We're at a stalemate. So I would hope the government will start enforcing the law and hold our elected officials accountable. When five people make decisions, that is not a majority. We're in violation of our voting laws. The Constitution gives everyone the right to vote, so whenever an item or an issue comes up for vote, the people should have this issue brought in front of them so they may vote on it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manal.
Good afternoon. My name's Susan LaRue. I was born and raised in Salina. I have an issue with the water bills in Inrock Park. We have nobody that uses that park anymore because they don't, they've quit mowing it. I live across the road, and I can't even go out and enjoy my own yard because of the weeds, they're as tall as I am, and the bugs, but I was, I did talk to the girl at the Parks Department, she said she'd check into it, that's all she told me, and on the water bill, I'm on Social Security, so my water bill is due on the 8th of next month, but because of my Social Security check, I don't get that till the 14th, so I'm constantly paying that late fee, and I live on a fixed income, and it makes it a little hard when you have to pay a late fee to all these different places, so I was wanting to know, ever do you did send me this form, where they go by when you get your Social Security check? So I actually don't have to pay my bill there until the 21st, but they're the only ones I have met that I've talked to that is willing to work with me. Now Susan Watts told me they did change our extended period for 15 days instead of three days to pay that, so actually my bill is in July, isn't due till 14th, and that's the late date, but there's days, there's times I don't get my check. But there's days, there's times I don't get my check until like the 16th, 17th, somewhere in there, because of when that, wherever that Wednesday falls in that month. So I was wanting to know if maybe they could come up with a program like that Evergy has for people like me. I know people that don't get their check until the third and fourth week of the month. So, and Susan said she would check into that also for me.
And was Susan Watts, you said, was she with the city of Salina?
She's in Water Customs.
Yeah, she's in Water Department. She, the lady I talked to, told me to talk to about it.
Okay.
And she did say she would check into that. I don't know, I don't know that I have a copy of the program that Evergy sent me to fill out, but if I do, I would be willing to bring it up for, you know, for the city commissioners to look at and see if they couldn't help the people out that have to live on what they make and.
Sure.
You know, I mean, I miss my job, let me tell you. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Leroux. I mean, that seems, I'm sure that we can access the information on, in terms of Evergy's
Yeah.
due date change form, but hopefully staff will be able to get back with us about the status and the ability for us to change a due date.
We have points of contact with Evergy, so we can reach out and find out a little bit more about it and see if it's workable in our system.
Yeah, okay. And the deal on the park?
Yes.
Is there something we can do about that?
Well, now that you-
People have quit using the park because of the bugs up there, you can't, when I moved in there in 2005, that park was pristine. Dean Graybell was there at least once a week mowing it. But now nobody mows it this, and then nobody's been there this year at all.
Okay, well, we'll have, we'll have staff take a look at that, and just, I know it's one of my regular walking routes, but I know that some of those areas have been designated a prairie habitat, and so I don't know, you know, if you're talking about an area that was like mowed last summer, but it hasn't been mowed yet this summer.
Yeah.
But it may reflect an overall change in philosophy in terms of what the Parks Department does, so we'll follow up on that.
What's weird about it is that last week, there was two mowers, I see them go by my house like twice a week, and they go over toward the dike where the ball fields are, and I understand that, but they actually mowed one corner on, you know, where I live, there's a fork where you go up onto the Indian Rock. On this corner over here, they mowed the, on this side, and they made like two strips on the other side of the road, but they didn't mow anything else.
Okay.
And I thought that was just kind of strange that they wouldn't mow the whole thing.
Okay.
So, thank you for your time.
Well, we'll take it at that.
You have a great day.
Thank you, you too. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at Citizens Forum? Come on up.
Sorry, came in a little late, I wasn't sure, I have a house at 823 Spruce Street.
Could you give us your name?
Sierra, Sierra Hearn.
That is on our agenda.
Oh.
That's going to be the next item that we consider, so.
Okay.
So we'll invite you to come up at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And is there anyone available online? Okay, all right, well, we will proceed to item 5.1.
Item 5.1, public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution Number 21-7968 declaring a certain structure located at 823 Spruce Street in the city of Salina to be unsafe and dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired or removed, and establishing a reasonable time within which the repair or removal of such structures shall commence and be completed.
All right, well, we will declare the public hearing open, and I will look to Mr. Pilcher to fill us in on the background of this item.
Thank you, Jacob. Sean Pilcher, building official with the city of Salina. This is my building official's request for condemnation for 823 Spruce Street. My stuff's going to fall off here, so I'm going to move this. All right. Required process given to us by KSA 121750 provides the authority for cities to repair or remove dangerous structures by complying with the following statutory procedures. Summarized as follows, this pass a resolution to conduct a public hearing, city commission did that on May 10 of 2021 with Resolution 217950, and set the date for today, June 28. We were required to publish the resolutions two times, at least 30 days prior to the hearing, did that on May 16 and 23 of 2021. Copy of the resolution must be mailed to the interested parties. The mailings were completed on May 20, 21. A lot of these things I'm going to, I'll cover again, you'll get more explicit dates on results of those mailings and things like that. Conduct the, conduct the public hearing, which is what we're doing today, that's where the commission will hear evidence from the building official, as well as property owner and other interested parties, as to whether the structure is unsafe or dangerous. At the conclusion of the hearing, city commission shall determine if the structure is unsafe or dangerous. If it's dangerous, the resolution must be passed by the city commission. And that, that was attached in your packet. The resolution shall establish a reasonable time for the property owner to commence and complete repairs or demolition to the structure, and state that the property owner, if they fail to commence or complete within the times set by the commission, the city will cause the structure to be repaired or demolished. The residue, resolution after that will be published in the city's official newspaper and mailed to the owners and identified parties of interest. The cost to the city, the city is to perform, if the city is to perform the demolition, there's a state law that provides a process for that. The city may sell or salvage anything from the property if they, if they see anything that's going to help go against the incurred cost. Any costs beyond that are billed to the property owner and payable within 30 days. If the owner fails to make payment, the cost will be placed on a special assessment against the land on which the structure is located. To date, costs incurred to the city have been securing the property, which has been a total of $1,952. We had to do it three times, once for the initial boarding up of the structure, and then two more times because vagrants have broken into it, so we had to go back and fix that boarding up. And also research, site inspection, fee for the title report, which is $250, documentation preparation, legal counsel certified mailings. To ensure procedural fairness, the building official's evidence is not enclosed with the staff's report or packet to the commission prior to the meeting, when they mail it out on Thursday before. It was given to you today, the building official's evidence will be presented to the city commission for the first time during the public hearings. Okay, moving on to the recommendation, this first page is as a, just information about the property. 823 Spruce Street, there's your legal description, building description, single-family dwelling, there's no detached accessory structures, it is vacant currently, taxes and other assessments owed for it is the second half of 2019 and all of 2020 totaling $349.37. The next list is a list of the identified parties that we acquired from the title report, and also the current owner actually contacted me and let me know that she was purchasing the property, which is Sierra Hearn listed first there. The others are names that were listed on the title report from Mid-Kansas Title. The mailings that we were sent out were on May the 20th of 21, and you can see on the side there when they were signed and received, or one of them from Alena Brown was returned undeliverable. Contents of that mailing were a cover letter explaining the process, a dangerous structures inspection checklist, and the resolution that set the public hearing date. The property was also posted on May the 10th, 2021, giving information about the public hearing date. Okay, moving on to the background of the property. A fire occurred on the property on February 6, 2020, damaging much of the interior of the house, as well as structural elements, including wall studs and ceiling joists. Since the day of the fire, the property has changed hands two times. The current owner, Sierra Hearn, purchased the property on March 31, 2021. Ms. Hearn contacted Building Services staff on June 7 to say that she had decided to demolish the property, but no demolition permit has been, application has been received as of today. The property was uninsured, so the city does not have any insurance proceeds. After the expiration of previous attempts at getting the property up to code, it was determined by the building official that the dangerous structures assessment would be performed per KSA 121750. Only one of the 11 criteria on the list needs to be met for the structure to be considered dangerous. This property has seven areas of concern, as noted in the attached dangerous structure inspection checklist in your packet there. Moving on to the timeline, fire occurred on February 6, as I mentioned, post-fire inspection was performed at that time. This is the standard post-fire inspection, it was not the dangerous structure thing as proposed by statute, that was one that we do after every fire. But it was flagged at that time as potentially a dangerous structure. Post violation, post-fire violation of this was sent February 7. That gave information on the structural defects of the building and gave a deadline of February 17 of '22 to get it boarded up. August 26, the property was boarded up by the city for a total cost of $1,952, and as noted there, March 26 and 30, it was, those, that job was repaired due to vagrants damaging this boarding up. March 31, property was purchased by Sierra Hearn. Dangerous structure was completed, assessment was completed on April 1, and you'll see, we'll see the numbered items below as we get through this a little bit. A notice to order an abate, dangerous structure was sent on April 2, and the deadline to apply for a demo or repair permit expired on April 12 of 2021. Request for public hearing, we did that on May 10, 2021. Commission set the public hearing date for today with Resolution 217950. Drive-by curb inspection was completed today, hasn't been any changes to the property other than a little bit more debris outside, and I think the roll-off dumpster is gone now, that was moved in for a period of time, but now it's, it's gone. Moving forward, there's, this, the, I think these photos at first are direct, right after the fire, this is before it got boarded up by the city, but as you can see, there's pretty extensive damage to the outside. This photo here is of the west side, you see fire was rolling out the walls, windows there, burning up the side of the house. This is of the east side, you can see there are three meters there, there were two apartments added to this structure that were also without, weren't, were without a permit, but there was three meters there. And that shows that. The next few photos are interior photos, this is where the kitchen used to be, you can see a lot of, pretty much all, everything is gutted out of there. This is looking up inside the kitchen, see a lot of structural damage from the fire to floor, walls, ceilings. Can't remember, this might be another photo of the kitchen area here, but it's just kind of more examples of the, of the damage that has been done to the inside of the property. Next photo there is looking up, ceiling's missing, holes in the roof, you can see outside. As you can tell, the damage is pretty extensive on the inside of this property. Listed repairs coming from the dangerous structures checklist. Property of smoke and fire damage to the point where 100% of the interior floor area is uninhabitable. There are structural fire damage to the wall studs and floor and ceiling joists that needs to be repaired. Number three, plumbing, electrical, mechanical systems are completely destroyed and need to be replaced. Number four, electric, gas, and meters have been pulled and cannot be restored until the damage is either repaired or removed. And number five, all the windows and doors to the property have been boarded up to prevent entrance to the structure, and will need to be repaired prior to approving occupancy. In conclusion, building official has determined that the structure is unsafe and dangerous. The building official therefore requests that the governing body, number one, make findings by resolution that the structure is unsafe and dangerous, number two, that the structure be repaired or removed, and three, fix a reasonable time within which repair or removal of the structure will be completed in pursuant to KSA 1750. And then, I guess that last one is a little bit redundant, but staff recommends removal happen on or before August 27, 2021, that is two months, and references option one on the blue sheet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pilcher. Any questions for staff? Thank you, appreciate it. Any comments from the public?
Phil Black, 815 Spruce, so I'm, there's a house between me and it, and there are four houses total on the block, and I contacted staff, I think about a year ago, to say that if we open the windows, you're still smelling things coming in. And the problem is, what he didn't mention is that the house, as I recall from the, looking it up with the county, it's about 1909, something like that, and it's quite old. And so we don't know if there's asbestos, we don't know if there's lead, we don't know what's on, going on in there until, as I understand it, until we make a decision what to do. That, because I asked the county, I asked the state, others to come in and do some sort of test, because we didn't know what we were smelling out there. And the house to my immediate right is catty corner from Cottonwood Playground and the school, so I mean, if I can smell this stuff, I'm pretty sure it's, I don't know what's in the air, and maybe there's nothing there, but I just, so I contacted, about a year ago, they said they, it was high on the list, but the budget is preventing us from doing anything. And then I called after, I don't know, maybe March, because nothing had been done, and they said it had been bought and sold several times. Now, I appreciate that we have a process to go to, through, and I appreciate that we want to protect the property owner's rights, but I would hope that we get this done quickly, and I'm really gratified to see that the date that you guys have chosen is August 27 to have it done by, because I, I think, I just, we don't have any idea what's going in the air, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Black. Anyone else, if you, if you'd like to speak now?
All right, I brought this property on.
Could you, could you identify?
Sierra Hearn. Yes, I brought, brought the property on March 25. My whole thing was to demo it, get rid of it, and put a one-module home on it, and that was my idea. My financial backing, I'm waiting on my, I mean, I have the money to get it demoed, that's what I was going to do, or sell the place. I called State and Deal to get it demoed, and they told me an amount. I'm just looking to either sell it or demo it myself, which I'm not financially able to. I know it's not economically feasible to fix the house, it definitely needs to be tore down. I got some, Kelly Wilson from Abilene, they do a construct, they do demos for, that's what he does. They're thinking about buying it, demoing it, and putting like a module home or a double mod on it. I know the property is 158 feet, I didn't know how much the property, I need to get ahold of a realtor to see how much the property's worth, whether it's, I mean, going to make money to, for me to tear it down, or if I'm over my head and I need to sell it. I do have it listed already on Buy, Sell, Trade, and I've already had a couple people look at it that are really serious about it, one, people are just waiting for the loan, so hopefully, that's my plan.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this issue? And I'm not, unless there's someone online, and I don't see anyone with their virtual hand raised, we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
I have a question, I guess, for Mr. Pilcher. If, if the property was to be, if, if we were to pass the resolution, resolution fixing the time of 60 days, will there be something recorded if that property's sold that the new buyer would know that it still needs to be demoed by that August 27 date?
Yes, any resolution that you pass would go with the property, not, not, it's not to the property owner currently, so anybody who buys it, this will be filed to the deed as well.
And would it be filed immediately after the passing of the resolution?
Yeah, we'll get, I'll get that up there tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't believe I had, was notified of that when I bought it. I think I got it in the mail.
You'll have to go up to the, if you have a, if you want to return to the mic real quick, you can't speak from the audience, we have to, have to do it so everybody at home can see you too.
I was thinking, I don't think I got a letter saying that, that had a certain due date when I, when I had bought it, I got that in the mail a little later, which is-
Because there wasn't any at the time you bought it?
Right.
It hasn't been, it hadn't been to the commission at all, even to set the public hearing date? hearing date? So that's why it wasn't?
Okay. Well, I think I can get it sold by August, or whatever the date was.
Thank you.
And another thing, ma'am, and actually, I had been mowing the property, and we've got all the trees piled up on one side. I did get a roll-off, but we've been maintaining the yard and everything on it, too. So as far as that's going.
So just as a point of clarification for everyone, Ms. Hearn and commissioners, in the event that it does sell, the deadline stays the same.
Still the same, sure.
So the buyer is subject to that deadline.
Right. And then, I have another question on the, there's like $1,000, I think you said it in your report, of previous people getting fined for not complying with, like you said, billboarding it up and the lawn and trees and all that. And I'm wondering, why does that fall on the next buyer if it wasn't maintained by? I'm just wondering, that's just post-procedure.
Any fees that were...
Mr. Pilcher, if you guys want to switch positions, and you can speak to it at the microphone.
Any fees that are assessed to the property kind of get handled the same way as what we...
You come a little closer, I'm getting the signal that we can hear you.
Yeah. That's right. Any fees that were assessed to the property kind of get handled the same way as what I had talked about earlier. If we have to demolish the property, if the current owner doesn't pay them, then it gets put on the property taxes.
Right, right.
And so, if it gets sold then, then that's, I guess, goes on to the next person.
Right, right. Since we don't have any way to recover our costs for boarding it up, and then having to board it up a couple more times, what happens is if, you know, the previous owner doesn't pay it, then those lien, I don't know if lien's the right word, probably Commissioner Hoppeck would, is probably shaking his head, but that would stay with the property. So if you sold it, you know, if it was sold to you with those liens on it, that's just how it works.
Right.
So, okay. Thank you.
Tell me that it works that way, just because, you know, it should be on the, but yeah, I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are past due property taxes on it also, it appears, so.
Yes.
Yes.
So if it is demolished by the owner prior to the deadline, we wouldn't be assessing that $1,900 against the property? That's a cost we would have incurred?
Okay. That's, okay, that's a good clarification. Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
Mayor, as I move, we approve Resolution Number 21-7968, finding that the structure at 823 Spruce Street is unsafe or dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired or removed, fixing the time of 60 days, making that on or before August 27th, 2021, within which the repairs or removal shall be completed, and authorizing staff to proceed with the demolition or repair if the owners fail to comply.
And I should note that we have, thank you. And we should note that the public hearing has now been closed. I'm sorry about that.
I don't know. I would like to add about the resolution, it does have a commencement date of July 28th.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-7968. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. Which brings us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 21, 2021. Item 6.2, approve the donation of 90 hemorrhage control kits to utilize in the event of a traumatic injury to be paid in full by the Salina Police Department Excellence Fund. Item 6.3, award the bid for project number 21011, City Parking Lot Repairs to Davis Concrete Construction in the amount of $31,295.81, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $32,860.60, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Davis Concrete Construction upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. And item 6.4, award the bid for project number 21013, 2021 Chip Seal to APAC Kansas Inc., Shears Division, Salina Branch, in the amount of $162,974.61, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $171,123.34, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with APAC Kansas Inc., Shears Division, Salina Branch, upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Thank you. Are there any items that a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? I just had one comment to make on, not a removal, but just, I wanted to express our gratitude. I knew we had officers here today, but I did want to express our gratitude to the Salina Police Department Excellence Fund. Every year, they bring projects, supplies to us that the police department and the city of Salina probably wouldn't have been able to afford on their own. And we really appreciate their generosity in donating 90 hemorrhage control kits, also known as IPOCs. I hope I got the acronym right. So I just wanted them to know how grateful we are that they continue to support the Salina Police Department. And with that, I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 21-11052, amending this line of code pertaining to prohibitions of smoking and the use of electronic cigarettes in enclosed public places, public meetings, and enclosed places of employment, prohibitions of smoking, the use of electronic cigarettes, and the use of tobacco products in city outdoor recreational areas, and repealing the existing sections.
Thank you. Ordinance number 21-11052 was passed on first reading on June 21st, 2021. Since that time, I believe at our shared city commission email address, we have received three emails about this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from staff, or I mean, from the commission?
I would offer one clarification. Between first reading and second reading, the exemption for the municipal golf course was removed. So the version that's before you now includes the golf courses being subject to the ordinance.
Any questions or comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be closer to the middle so you can see me. Hi, Chad Farber, here in Salina. And I sent an email this past week, and a couple of you responded to that, and I appreciate that. Everybody who sees me online is going to question my thought process on this, because I am not a smoker. I know the dangers of smoking. I know the dangers of vaping. I have a teenage daughter, and we've discussed, you know, the vaping dangers. I do have a problem, however, with a governing body trying to enact more restrictions and mandates upon the public. And it goes, I would dare say, almost to the point of overstepping your bounds to try to impose more restrictions upon outdoor areas in our city. That's originally what those outdoor areas are for, so that we can go out and enjoy the outdoors. Even the original ordinance from 2009 had language exposing the dangers of burning tobacco in enclosed spaces. And we all recognize those dangers. We understand that. I appreciate the fact that in Salina, I can go to a restaurant and not have cigarette smoke blown in my face. I appreciate that. However, we live in America, I think Commissioner Ryan said it last week, we live in a free land where people have freedom to make dumb choices if they so choose. And if people so choose to smoke, that is their, in my opinion, dumb choice, but it is their choice to make that decision. I would also add that in the newspaper article that was sent out this week in regards to this ordinance, it had it reversed that the golf park, the municipal golf course was not exempted from this. And so I don't know if that affected the public's view of this ordinance, or if anybody else has gotten any comments about that. But I would venture to say that outdoors is the safest place for our families right now. If somebody is smoking, if somebody is vaping, we have the opportunity to move to another swing set. We have the opportunity to move to another picnic table. And so I would, and it sounds very strange, because I grew up in North Carolina, the national capital of tobacco, where all the dangers are outlined all the time, and we fought to get that wording on the cigarette packages and different things. But I believe we have the freedom to make our own choices. And being outside, being on a golf course, I think people deserve the freedom to do that. I would respectfully ask you to reconsider the decision that this board made last week. And, you know, there were a lot of statistics that were brought up about teenagers and the damage to their bodies and so forth with vaping. But there's already a law against underage smoking right now. So another ordinance is not going to increase that factor. I would respectfully ask you to reconsider the decision from last week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Farber.
There's an old saying, one for all and all for one.
Hi. My name is Terry White. I have lived in Salina all my life, for, well, I've been 62 years. I've been to the parks. I have seen people in the parks. I do not feel that we should make a consideration or a mandate saying that if you smoke, you can't go to the park. Why not? You can, Jerry Ivy Park, for instance, is big enough, you can go anywhere in Jerry Ivy Park and not be aware of smoking. But I think that if you're going to do this, it should be voted on by the public. You know, we've got lots more pressing issues. We've got homelessness. We've got needles in the park. We've got trash in the park. You know, I'm sorry, but I think cigarette smoking is just a little bit silly right now. I think we need to address some of the, the homeless is terrible. I've lived here 62 years, and I had never seen homeless till probably three years ago. I mean, I'm not naive or anything, but I just don't, I never saw it, so I didn't know it. But smoking is somebody's right to do. If they want to do it, let them do it. And if you don't want to be around them, then don't be around them. But the people that have, go to the parks that smoke or whatever, what are they going to do with their kids? They're not going to, you know, we have companies that come in and say, well, I'm not, we're going to not come back like that antique car show or whatever, that car show thing that comes to Kenwood. They don't, they won't come back because some of their members smoking, they're saying, oh, we can't go because, you know, we can't smoke a cigarette, so we're not going to go. So then we're going to lose business. We're going to lose, Smoky River Festival has a specific spot you're supposed to go and smoke. I've never seen it. I've, you know, I've never been around anybody. But I think that if you're going to put this into a mandate or anything, the public needs to vote. They need to be the ones that say, yes, we want this, and no, we don't.
Thank you very much, Ms. White.
Joan Ratzleff, Salina. I just want to comment that I really liked what they did at the River Festival a couple years ago, I think it was, where they had designated smoking areas when you've got large crowds of people, so you don't have to have someone, you know, smoking right next to you. So I like that approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ratzleff. Is there anyone else who would like to comment here today? And is there anyone online who would like to comment? If so, raise your virtual hand, and we will unmute you. I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Commissioner Davis here?
Mm-hmm.
I did review this in my mind several times over the past week. You know, the outdoors is a great big wide space, and, you know, I came away from my deliberation a bit more resolved than I was before. As far as the golf course is concerned, if smoking is allowed, then that is litter that someone has to clean up. I would hope that in the hot, dry summer months, we don't have people dropping cigarette butts out there on the rough room, on the grass, just for the risk of starting a fire. And, you know, America is advertised as a free country, but, you know, those freedoms are, as we differ from other countries, are relatively human-specific. But we are not free to endanger someone else's health and enjoyment. We're not saying you can't come to the park if you smoke cigarettes. We're saying if you're in the park and you want to smoke a cigarette, well, then you need to do it vehicle. We don't allow smoking in football stadiums. And guess what? People still come to football games. You know, there are several areas where the societal norm has been that you don't smoke. You know, what we thought was true about cigarettes 100 years ago, we found it really wasn't. And it's strange, if you listen to the old, there's an old radio program on XM radio, it's the old radio classics, there are actually several references to the known dangers of cigarette smoking back in the 30s, 40s, and 50s, but it just kind of got lost. We finally wised up and realized, eh, maybe this isn't as good a habit as we thought it was. For the same reason, we don't have open alcohol in a lot of parks. One, because of reckless behavior, two, because it sets a bad precedent for kids. This is another societal norm, and I think it's time for this country, and I want to talk about our community, for our community to start grappling with. We're really, and again, I realize outdoors is a wide area, but, you know, from, I think the health and the environmental maintenance perspective, you know, we will reach those who are reachable. You know, speeding signs say you can't go over a certain speed limit. Do we make, keep everybody from going over that speed limit? No. And we're not trying with any law, I don't think, expect them to get 100% compliance as nice as we can. But if it becomes a societal norm, you know, you slowly get close to that, to that number. And I don't really see a problem with having a uniform policy on our parks. If we decide to have a designated area for the parks, that can be set up, and that's something staff can, I think, come back and recommend. But the time that people spend in a park during the day is typically no longer than they spend in other activities now, in which it is the accepted norm that smoking will occur. How are you?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Davis. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
And I know Commissioner Peck, I think, was on when the original smoking ban was passed, and I agreed with that, that it was proven that secondhand smoking in enclosed areas, I believe enclosed areas was the word used, was hazardous to health. When I look at our parks or the golf course, I see acres and acres of room. I happened to be at Jerry Ivy Park this weekend, and I did see two people smoking. One of them was a lady walking her dog at the far south end away from anybody, where there was no risk to anyone. My concern is, you know, if a problem's brought to us, we fix it. I have not had anyone come to us as smoking in the parks as being a problem, you know? We had a group brought us an idea, and so we took it up. You know, Commissioner Davis talked about litter. Well, I go to the park, and I see probably more soda cans and candy wrappers than I do cigarette butts, and I'm not going to outlaw candy bars and soda cans at the park. So I still believe that it's a little bit of an overreach on our part, so it's just my comments.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. I'll look to my fellow commissioners to make a motion, one way or the other.
Mayor Hodges, I move approval of ordinance number 21-11052 on second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11052 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Nay.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Nay.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 3-2. And I think that Commissioner Davis did make a good point. If, as we implement this, if it looks like there are going to need to be designated smoking areas in the park, you know, I think that that's something that we can, we can take up if it, if this proves problematic, either from an enforcement or a park use standpoint. All right, that takes us to item 7.2.
Item 7.2, Salina Media Connection Agreement Discussion.
All right, Mr. Wood.
Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. We've had a lot of discussions about Salina Media Connection Agreement over the last couple of years. And on April 26th, the city commission directed staff to bring the recording and casting of public meetings in-house. Those are all the meetings that are cast on Cox Cable, Channel 20. On May 24th, the commission approved a resolution amending our current pay plan to allow for the hiring of that new employee to perform these duties. We have advertised for that, and we're actually going to start interviewing for that position here in the next week. At that same commission meeting, the commission directed staff to solicit a proposal from SMC to do the things that are outside of recording and casting public meetings, so the things that happen on Channel 21, and also running the media center and all those sorts of things. As soon as we made that decision, staff reached out to Salina Media Connection to make sure that they understood that they were to make a proposal to the city commission. On June 21st, we received a letter from SMC that was just basically requesting a meeting with city staff. And they requested that meeting to take place on June 24th, which was last Thursday. We met with them in the morning on the 24th, kind of talked about the way to move forward. And they provided a letter to us later that day, or a proposal to go in the commission packet late in the day on the 24th. And so that letter is attached here with their proposal. The proposal has a funding request for the items on Channel 21. It would be anywhere from either $243,000, which would be for what they've deemed as optimum operation. And you can see the breakdown in that proposal, what that includes. Or an alternative for a reduced amount, which would be at $175,000 for reduced operation. And once again, it's outlined in that, the document that's attached. I just want to kind of give you an update on where we're at. Based on the decision to move the in-house, or to move the recording and casting of public meetings in-house, we have started that process. We're working with Cox to bring equipment from across the street. We've worked with Eagle Communications to kind of determine what equipment we might need in order to fulfill that role in here, and we've also started the hiring process for employees. One of the things that we haven't done is we haven't put any, an order for new equipment. So right now, there's two sets of equipment sitting over at Memorial Hall, that one of the sets of equipment is attached to Channel 20, and one is attached to Channel 21. We can move the equipment that's attached to Channel 20 right now without any problem. But there's another set of equipment that feeds both channels. And so that set of equipment is about $50,000, and we haven't put that on order, kind of pending this decision on how we move forward with Salina Media Connection. If the city commission decides they don't want to move forward with Salina Media Connection, we can utilize that equipment, bring it across the street, and use that to move forward. If the city commission decides they do want to have some sort of an ongoing relationship with Salina Media Connection, obviously, we'd have to order a new set of equipment. So that's something that we haven't done, but we're prepared to do that, depending on the decision that the city commission makes. I did want to kind of mention, we did receive a proposal from Salina Public Library over the last couple of weeks, talking about doing an audiovisual studio. One of the things that we've had a lot of public comment about is that there's a studio operation that Salina Media Connection runs across the street that's pretty important to the public. Salina Public Library has said that they are interested in having some sort of a studio. They would like to partner with the city if there was an opportunity to do that in the future. So if that's something the city commission's interested in, still having that service out in the community, they're not interested in taking on Channel 21, but they would be interested in having classes and the ability for the public to go in and record and cast and do that sort of, not cast, but record at their facility. Let's see here. So the options that I've laid out for the city commission, what, let me go back just a second. So the letter that came from Salina Media Connection with the proposal also included an option to do a month-to-month, just to kind of keep this, the current operation going on a month-to-month basis, until we're able to fully move all of the equipment and everything across the street, order new equipment, that sort of thing, to get the in-house recording and casting completed. They have offered that as an option, as well as just kind of redoing the contract altogether. So the options that I've laid out, based on the information I had at the time that I produced this packet, or we put the staff report together, the first option there is just to extend the current agreement with SMC on a month-to-month basis, as they've kind of outlined in their document. That would be at 1/12 the current rate, is what they've requested, or about $18,000 a month. The city commission could also decide that they would like to extend on a month-to-month basis and choose a different rate. And then, you know, you could also say, we'll let you continue to do what you're doing and expend any available fund balance that they have. The second option that I have outlined here is direct staff to begin negotiations with SMC for a long-term agreement for the operation of Channel 21. And that would be, their request is anywhere from $243,000 annually to, or $175 to $243. And then the third option that I have is to allow current contract to terminate on June 30th, as we've already provided termination notice and discontinued use of Channel 21. And that transition would take place as it's outlined in the current agreement. There's some steps that we'd have to take in order to do that. I do want to mention, in front of you, you do have a letter from Salina Media Connection that came in today. They've taken exception with the way that I've characterized our options a little bit here, basically saying that their request was for an extension of the contract and to negotiate at the same time. While I think that that is appropriate, that is what they've asked for, I'm not necessarily sure that that means that that's what our options are. I think our options are still, as I've outlined here. There is also an option to, you know, direct staff in other direction if you want to do that. So with that, Salina Media Connection is here. They have some representation online as well. I'm happy to take any questions that you have now. Or Salina Media Connection, I'm sure, has some people that would like to speak at this point. So I think that's where we're at.
Just to start it off, are there any questions to begin with for staff before we turn to Representative from SMC?
Could staff review me on the, our costs and the setting up what we're trying to accomplish?
So the annual cost that we have figured to actually run in-house casting and recording, we expect that with staff and all the equipment, everything, to take between $100,000 and $120,000 a year for us to do that. Depending on decisions that the commission makes, there will be some upfront equipment costs. We expect that to be $40,000 to $50,000. If, if you don't make the decision, I mean, if you make a decision and you don't want to move forward with Salina Media Connection, it gets a lot cheaper. They'll still probably be $10,000 or $12,000. But there's a lot of equipment that's across the street that we could reutilize here. There is a cost to Cox Communication for moving equipment across the street. That's about $8,000. So it's not a, not as high as actually I thought it would be going in. So the annual cost, I expect it to be between $100,000 and $120,000. Right now, we pay Salina Media Connection a certain percentage of our cable franchise, and that's generally been anywhere from $200,000 to $220,000 a year. So the cost, if we don't do anything with Salina Media Connection, I expect we'll save about $100,000, between $100,000 and $130,000 a year. We also have costs across the street for Memorial Hall. It cost us between $30,000 and $40,000 a year for maintenance, utilities, and all those things across the street. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And possible revenue from the county for contributing towards?
There'll be some, some backflow from the county at some point. We haven't come to an agreement on that at this point.
Salina Media Connection has talked about a month-to-month to help us with our transition. How do we feel as far as come July, is it July 1?
July 1.
Yeah, July 1. Got my months mixed up. July 1, that we'll be able to broadcast our programs?
So I have, Eagle Communications are all set to take on that responsibility. It would still have to go from this facility across the street through the current equipment that's over there. So we would have to get in there, look at the setup, have Eagle come in and look at the setup. But I'm confident that between Eagle and our staff, we can figure out a way to make the casting continue to work without Salina Media Connection's help. So we would have to get across the street and get over and look at some of those things. But I'm confident we can continue.
So we are ready to assume that responsibility?
Yes.
Sorry, didn't mean to jump in.
Nope.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Davis?
No, just some understanding, this be, in the letter from the Board of Salina Media, they know that they were going to present a draft new contract by July 7. And I'm guessing they're, month-to-month, if we weren't ready to produce our meetings ourselves, would give us time to get our meetings together, and during that month gives them a time to present a draft budget. If we take over our, well, the next meeting we would have to produce would be July 12. So there'd be two weeks to get ready for it. But what would happen during the, from July 1 until, and if a new contract with Salina Media Connection was finalized, what would happen to Channel 21 as far as on-air?
I'm not sure I have a, an answer for that question. I mean, Salina Media Connection could continue. I mean, as long as we allow them access to the facility, I think they could continue to program that channel for as long as we provide access. So I don't think anything would necessarily happen to it.
If I, if I could add to that a little bit, I think just purely by the structure of the contract, it would terminate on July 1. And so the initial answer would be, they would, there would no longer be an agreement in place for them to be able to utilize the facility and continue to program. Having said that, we could, you know, permit that, but we wouldn't necessarily have a written agreement in place in that interim time period.
All right. And the, one question for Salina Media and for our staff would be, if there are enough specifics of the contract that would be known now for us to make a decision on funding today, with details to be worked out later. And the other issue would be, I'd like to see us delay our discussion of the library proposal. And if Salina Media Connection continues to broadcast from Channel 21, let Salina Media and the library work out the details of any collaborative effort. I wouldn't want, you know, thought of financing for the library's program to interfere with our thoughts on the Salina Media proposal. I think that's all for now.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? And if not, does Salina Media Connection have a designated person or people that would like to address the commission?
Right now, you have two designated people, because we'll cover two different things.
Sure.
And I'm going to sit down after I get through with mine, I think. We sent an email to you today. You may not have had a chance to read it, but it's because we think there's an apparent misunderstanding of the options that we talked about in our meeting with staff. And I'm just going to read this to you, because it's better for me to just read than try to think and talk without reading. The first two, well, let me get back to the, we think there's an apparent misunderstanding. The first two options listed for the commission that the staff has said is, number one, extend SMC's current contract month-to-month. And number two, direct staff to begin negotiation with SMC for a long-term agreement. Making it number one or number two, those two choices. But our conversation was that that was one suggestion, because we are absolutely willing to do the month-to-month as things get ready to be done by the city with your government taping. But we also wanted to negotiate the terms to continue. Because I will just say that I have been one of the volunteer managers of Salina Media Connection for about a year and a half now. That is not what I started doing. I went to just volunteer. But I have a sister-in-law who was very major in television, and she passed away. She broke barriers for women in television. And I just know that my, working with her and talking with her, getting to know her, gave me a love for television that just kind of woke up when I came and volunteered again. So what we're wanting to do is continue Salina Media Connection's opportunity to bring people together to talk. I think last commission meeting, someone said, we need to sit down and talk about things. Why we don't have a human relations department. Why people leave. Why people don't see that as something that they can stick with. There are just many other things in this community that have come up that we can utilize Salina Media Connection for, online or on tape or not. Because I have had some folks say, I'd like to come and maybe do some things on television, but I would also like to just talk. And that's a place where people do come already and talk to us about issues and want us to cover things that are happening in Salina. It is not the government building, which also helps, because not everyone is comfortable coming to the government building to talk all the time. And we listen, because that's what we need to do, to find out what people want to see on the channel. But I kind of got off track, and I'm going to stop. But we do have someone who is going to talk about the proposal that we're making with you. And I believe she's on Zoom. She is. Sue is on Zoom. And I'm going to stop. If I haven't covered everything, Sue will cover the rest of the things I should have said. But I just, for just a moment, wanted to say that I remember when Salina, well, it was Cable Access started, and what opportunity it gave this community to really show itself, show off, and show the things that people are doing. We still need that. We still need to show off. And I'm going to let Nancy go with the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy Klostermeier. I'm representing the Board of Directors, as well as the management team. And I'd first like to just make one correction, clarification again, when it was stated that we asked for a certain amount annually. That was not an annual. It's in the, in the communication, I believe, that that was for a transition year, and then we're projecting increasing amounts of obtaining outside funding. So it would not be an obligation for a large amount, or a certain amount for importunity. And also, just wondering, the costs across the street, there are other entities that are in that building. So whether there's any way to break out the costs that are actually attributable to community access or Salina Media? or Salina Media Connection versus the operation of the rest of the building is a, is a question. Now, to my original remarks, this process has involved many facets and moving parts. And to provide some additional insights, we have asked Sue Buskey to join us by Zoom. Sue has been a nationally recognized consultant for cable, television and local cable programming since 1972. In fact, Sue served as the principal franchise consultant and negotiator, working with the city personnel and community volunteers to establish Community Access Television of Salina in 1991. So as been referenced, Sue is joining us by Zoom. And it looks like technology is working. So Sue, it's, I defer to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. I was contacted about, oh, 30 days ago or so, maybe 35 days ago, by Greg Stevens to have a phone call. We were both on a webinar about the decisions associated with Sixth Circuit Court decision, which affected PAG and FCC rules. And I think he reconnected at that point in time because I was one of the speakers on the webinar. I took a call, we chatted. I said, of course, I'll try to see what I can do. So that you all understand, my clients are typically about 70% local governments and 30 to 35% community media centers such as Salina Media Connection. My approach to the work is to try, and this particularly in a situation like this, but in general, where I'm working between a city and a community media center organization, to try to find a happy medium, to try to find a way where the needs of all parties involved, and that would be, in this case, the local government, it would be the organization, but also would be the residents and organizations in the community are met and fulfilled. So in looking at the communications from city staff, I, I took a look at the things that, the decision in April, the May 14 termination letter, the, the other items about the transition the city had made, determined to transition from having the government channel being partnered under one roof, what we call PAG under one roof, public education and government access under one roof, and to pull the government out from that and do it on its own. It's rare, but some cities do that of your size. And that is a decision that has been made or is under consideration. I don't want to say one way or the other. Okay. So my goal is, okay, if that's the decision, we want to separate the P from the, from the community channel part, okay, then let's figure out a way to do it that's going to permit the government to accomplish what it desires to do, which is apparently to operate the channel, the government channel on its own, and to still permit there to be a channel for the community to use for United Way agencies, for local businesses, for residents, as, as was discussed, to have discussions, use programming. I know that Salina Media Connection has done. I went through and looked at some of the records, that sort of thing in the past. And let's figure out a way that we can maybe make that happen and create a win-win for everybody. So in looking at things and having discussions and looking at the timeframe that the city has in order to really accomplish quite a bit, to take it over completely, okay, we discussed and I suggested, why don't we have number one, a two, sort of a proposal with two pieces. Piece one is to allow the city ample time, based on the timeline that I have, the Salina Media Connection staff were given, okay, to do that transition. So the city can get certain things done by Cox, excuse me. So the city can get equipment acquired that they need to acquire. So the city can test things and make sure things are working correctly so that when the switch is flipped and it goes over to the city doing everything, that it will be a perfect transition. There will be no glitches. And at the same time, allow a window of time where the parties can continue to work out hopefully their differences, whatever they may be. And I would say that this, this transition to having some kind of at least a one-year contract, it, it's not just about the money. It's, it's also about the details in that contract. I looked at the draft contract, which staff provided to the organization, and it was a current contract with certain language that dealt with government access out of it. In talking with staff last Thursday, they said, well, that was not meant to be a final thing. My, my offer was simply this, and suggested, we're willing as an organization to work from that. Okay. The city has indicated certain changes it wanted off the gate. And we'd be more than happy to accept those. And then red line in, other things. In a previous communications from city staff, there was an indication that the city staff was not set on certain like reporting language or civic current agreement, et cetera. So we'll, we'll come up with a red line. We'll come back and we'll do that by July 7. So you'll have the beauty of having the month-to-month transition. If it, if it only takes one month, then it's only one month. But if it takes two months, you'll have that window of time to make sure that everything's in play so that when that transition happens, it's smooth. And at the same time, allow the parties to work together to try to work out hopefully an agreement that will allow the continued operation of the community channel, okay, which is the channel that the public has access to. The public would not have access to the government channel because that's for the government's purpose. The community channel is for the community's purpose. So the proposal that was laid out and the suggestion that, that I made to the organization, that I would help everybody with, not just the organization, but the city, okay, is to work through a process whereby on the other end of it, everybody's desires hopefully are fulfilled. There continues to be a channel functioning with a reasonably adequate budget for government, for public and for the community. The government accomplishes its, what I understand to be desired goals, to take over that government channel. And at least for, and you've got, you've got a transition window, which is totally controlled by the city, okay, a month to month. And then it's time to work out this other piece of agreement that would be one year. And then we would see, and you would see once what happened at the end of that one year. So that's kind of the proposal that I believe the organization has before the council and commission. I would hope that it's deemed reasonable. And I see it as my job to hopefully try to part, try to help the parties come to an arrangement that will work for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Buskey. Am I saying that correctly? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
If I could just make another comment as kind of the closer of the SMC. Moving forward during a transition, transition period, we reiterate our focused dedication to SMC's role as a documentarians of local community issues and actions, as well as activities and events through enhanced engagement of community members as program producers, participants and supporters of Salina Media Connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klostermeyer. And thank you, Ms. Cox, as well, for your remarks. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue? Well, hang on. Do we have any questions for Salina Media Connection specifically from the governing body? And if not, then I will open it up to questions or comments from the public. All right. And I don't see that we have anybody online with their hand raised, so I will.
I, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do, Mayor. Sorry.
Sorry. No, that's fine.
I couldn't get to the virtual button. I only have my hand.
Okay.
I try to be as handy as I can. I did have one comment as far as, from another experience. And I do not wish to harp on this, but sitting in the commission chairs, I know that when public hearings like this are held, you have the packet in front of you. You have had it since Thursday. It is easy to look at that. And then, of course, that, that's the material that you have to make a decision on. There has been a perception of delay on the part of SNC. And I, I'm not here to hash that out one way or another. But I do want to address the fact that this late letter, which might make the commissioners feel that this is yet another example of that. I'm just speaking as one of the board members who looked at the packet once it had been released on Thursday. And I was surprised to find these options set out as number one, either extend the contract presently, or two, to negotiate a whole new contract. So I hope that the commissioners will look at this and not, in my opinion, on the basis of what might be seen to be apparent, prejudge that. I think that commissioners, and again, I'm being, I hope resident with you, being in your position. You have what the staff gives you. You need to make decisions. They are charged with giving you the information. And I don't think there's any ill intent on the part of the staff. I think probably, it appears to me to be a mistranslation of intent. And I thought that we had a very good meeting. I thought it was worthwhile. I did want to say one other thing, and I think Nancy's mentioning us, our mission as documentarians fits perfectly. But if you look in the letter that was just sent, and I'm saying this because I've not had opportunity to, perhaps may not have had opportunity to read it in full. But the paragraph that reads about library intent, libraries intent is to provide equipment and training for individual skills for audiovisual presentation. SMC's continued mission is to be a local producer and provider of programming for the purpose of community information, education, deliberation and entertainment. And I, I just want to say that, as I think the letter indicates, and as Commissioner Davis indicated, there is an opportunity perhaps for collaboration. And it may be that we can work out an arrangement which will be to the advantage of funding to the taxpayer, no matter how that goes. I don't think that we're trying to eliminate that. And as Commissioner Davis said, let's not be distracted by that. But I do hope that the commissioners will provide adequate time and thought. And it seems to me that the suggestion for a one-month extension to see how things work out and see how it goes month by month, gives the commissioners, the city, SMC, everyone involved, a lot more flexibility in that regard. So those would be my comments, again, from a perspective of someone who has been in a similar role that made the decisions for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norland. Any other comments or questions from the public? All right. Bringing it back to the commission then for further discussion, action, remarks.
Commissioner Davis, guessing as I'm sitting here right now, I'd kind of like to combine options number one and number two. To extend the current agreement on a month-to-month basis, a month from now would be looking at Mondays, July 26. And that would give staff almost three weeks to negotiate a contract. If staff anticipates that they'll be busy enough with budget and other stuff, then we can kick it, you know, a few more Mondays down the road. And I'd just ask for an opinion from staff on that. But that would, you know, give a, a, an unpressured, I would call it a cooling off period, like in labor negotiations. But it's a relaxed period to negotiate a new contract. If one can't be negotiated, all we've done is kick the can down the road, two months. Nobody's going to go broke over that. At least we won't. Gives us time to get us up and running for our own production staff. And if we can work out a contract, everybody's satisfaction. I think Buskey's goals would be, as they were so well-stated, could be, could be realized. I'll yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have, I have some comments. I'm a, I guess, watch more television. I should. And, and I roll through Channel 21 every time I get a chance to just kind of see what's going on. And, and I continue to hear about local programming. And I'd say 50% of the time when I turn Channel 21 on, it's not local programming. We continue to hear about the community could use it to do this and do that. Commissioner Davis talked about kicking the can down the road a couple of weeks or a month. We've been kicking the can down the road for four years since I've been on the commission, it seems like. They, you know, originally now they're, not their optimum operational budget would be $175,000, which is 80% of what their current budget is. And that's without doing the government programming. I think the fact that Mr. Norland, as a board member, stated that he found the three options on this, on the blue sheet to be a surprise, might be part of our problem. I mean, these are things we've discussed for years. And for him as a board member to, to think that these wouldn't have been three of the options is beside me. I think staff has spent numerous hours trying to deal with Salina Media Connection over the years. I think even Commissioner Peck, when he was new, said it was a generational deal that he doesn't know of anyone that watches Channel 21. I've, I've made a, exerted effort to, to talk to people and ask them, you know, if you watch Channel 21, the public channel. And they say, yeah, I watch the commission meetings or this one now and then. I said, no, that's the government channel. Do you watch Channel 21? And the answer consistently seems to be no. This morning, I tried to watch the St. John's Military School celebration they had on Channel 21. And the, the, the audio was so bad, I just, I turned it. I couldn't, Duckers was trying to talk and I was trying to listen. And, and it really just so. I'm afraid. I, I disagree with Commissioner Davis on a combination of option one and two. And I'm probably, I will lean towards option three, which is terminating the contract as of June 30.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I know we've given Salina Media Connection several deadlines and, and a lot of what we've asked them to do over the past two years, they were in the process of doing or did accomplish. The, I think the issue with community programming has been somewhat sometimes referred to as the Titanic syndrome. Nobody wants to hop on a ship or stay on a ship they think can sink. And they have not had a, a reliable breadth of life to live on, you know, to get an executive director, to entice people to, to, to sign on for a year or two, not knowing if their contract was going to be alive in six months. You know, so it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy after a while. The government channel was always the last leader for the public channel. But the public channel was not due to something that needed to make money. Neither was the government channel. And where they paid disproportionately more for the government channel to allow the other program, sure. But we were getting the government channel out of it. So, you know, that was a win-win for both of us. This would be a chance to actually separate out the two and see just how much of a community asset this is. You know, we've asked them to sink or swim on their own, but we had their hands tied behind the back. So it really hasn't been, I don't think, a totally fair assessment of what can be done. We've laid it out on paper, on the blue sheets. I mean, it'd be way not even fair. This time, kind of like, hey, this is what you got to do. If you can't do it, oh, well, Lord knows. We tried hard to, to, to help you out. And maybe it shouldn't be, be in existence. But I think they need to be given a, a fair chance to, to succeed.
Mayor, Madam?
Of course.
If indeed they are the Titanic, I think the hole, the hole has been put in their hole is that the times have changed so dramatically. I'm a little bit frustrated in all the promises that they've made us. I mean, they talk about the facets, the possibilities, the opportunities, and the promise, but they've just failed to perform in that regard for us. And so I'm looking for a fresh start here. I think there needs to be a complete revisioning. And if that means we give it to the library and maybe they work the collaboration with Salina Media, I think it needs to be reconfigured. I don't think the board and the way it sustains it perpetuates itself is working. The programming's not satisfying. I agree with Commissioner's comments that nobody's watching it. So the rub for me is to sustain this with the kind of dollars that they are asking for. I'm okay that this I'm okay that this budget gets split. We use what we need to, to fix our channel and put the government program out there. But I can't see expanding our budget, spending more of the taxpayers' money to prop this up. And I'm not afraid of it going dark for a while if we need time to reset and find out, find a new mission statement for this channel. We're not going to lose the channel, but it might take some serious thought and make it what it can be and to have a change of, a change of heading and leadership.
Several meetings back, I had suggested, you know, opening up for requests for proposals from any interested organization. And, you know, I suggested that we discuss and negotiate with Salina Media Connection first because they were already sitting there, and it might be the easier approach. And if we ever opened it up for organizations, you know, to bid on this, they would certainly be an expected bidder. But...
Commissioner, I feel that we have asked for those things over a long period of time, and generally, we've just got pushback, obfuscation. They basically want to do it their way and want to just keep talking to us about changing. And I'm, I have to say that I'm weary of that.
Yeah, and I can understand that, I mean, there have been certain things we asked for specifically by a certain period of time. Some of those were time delays that COVID didn't allow. We've had several hybrid presentations in these meetings, just sorting through the technology ourselves. You know, we finally got up to a good product, judging by what we're using right here this afternoon. You know, I agree, the community programming has to increase, but they have to have resources to do that. And I would think it's hard for them to attract those resources and keep them if everyone thinks their doors are shutting in two months.
I do have remarks prepared, but I'd like to defer to Commissioner Peck if you, if you have anything that you would like to, sure.
I guess I do have one quick question. In terms of the equipment, in terms of the equipment at the facility and the potential division of that equipment, is that kind of an agreed-upon, this is ours, this is ours, or...
Well, actually, the provisions of the agreement is that it all reverts to the city. But for anything that Salina Media Connection can demonstrate, they purchased with funds other than city funds. So the presumption is that it's all our equipment. I think what Mr. Wood was describing is if, if we end up in a hybrid approach where Salina Media Connection's maintaining one channel or maintaining the other, how we would deal with that shared equipment and need to replace that.
Well, first of all, I, I share the frustrations that Commissioner Hoppick, Hoppick and Ryan have, have shared today. There is...
That sound is lost.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We, we can hear you, but I don't know if you can hear us.
Mayor, your mic is muted, and you have a hand up over here.
Okay. I don't know. I don't know what to do first.
Scoot over a chair. It looks like it would be the first thing to do.
I think we unmuted. Try your mic now and see if they can...
Testing. Can you hear me now?
Can hear you now.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Jacob. I should probably be muted more often. But I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to disregard if there's another member of the, the public that wants to speak. Was there a hand raised? Oh, Ms. Buskey.
Oh, God, wait, some things are said. Excellent. I think that regardless of what you decide to do from the standpoint of an ongoing agreement, all right, it doesn't hurt to have one more round of conversations. I have to bring, I have to follow up on Commissioner Davis's comment a little bit because I think it's worthy of expansion, based on my experience. The budget that Salina Media Connection has been working with, and I, I know, I don't know all the details, I've only got brought it, I was only involved in this, well, 30 years ago, but that lot has transpired in that 30 years, right? But in the last 30 days, what I can tell you is that the budget that they have been working with, particularly when that is number one, small, as compared to many other places in the country, in communities of that size that are doing paint under one roof. Okay, but again, P-E-G under one roof with one entity running them. Now, to follow up on one other comment that was made, one of the things that I do is I do strategic planning, business planning, for nonprofits and specifically community media centers. And one of the things I know about attracting quality talent to be able to manage facilities and attract grants, funds to produce programming, whether it's advertising and underwriting, there's a lot of different approaches. The entity that is going to be requesting that funding or applying for that grant or whatever, they, the funder, whether it's a business, or whether it's a foundation or state agency or whatever, need to know that they have a, I'll call it foundational funding. And that foundational funding will permit them to proceed and use the funds that they are being given to do a project or whatever in an effective and efficient fashion. And if the organization can't show that they have that foundational funding, then it is extraordinarily difficult to raise any additional funds. Now, there are places that have, but the difference is that they have the foundational funding. And I'll give you one specific example, and then I will stop. The small town of Truckee, California, okay, is up in the mountains in the San Yavas. And their operation is a PEG, like Salina Media Connection. And they have been able to, because they have foundational funding from the town of Truckee, okay, and they have been able to generate additional revenue because they've been able to attract both advertisers and other government agencies. In their case, because there are many joint powers authorities in that area for water, for sewer, for homeowners associations, et cetera, they have been asked to cover their meetings, okay? And they do multi-platform cable casting, which is multi-platform broadcast, if you use that term, it may be more appropriate. In other words, the show goes live on the cable system, it goes live online, it goes live on the YouTube channels, or whatever. That is the direction that the business of this field is going, okay? Now, that's a very small town with a small budget, but they've been able to amplify that budget because they have the foundational funds in place. Now, I will have to say, they also have a very talented executive director, okay? But the problem, as I understand it a little bit here, is it's just been sort of, and I'm, it's just, it's what it is. You guys are going to have to decide what you want to do, but I think you have to decide where do you want to have the community channel on. I mean, I think that's what this, a lot of this boils down to. Do you want to have a community channel or not? Because if you end the contract now, then Salina Media Connection has no resources to continue to operate that channel, okay? And that means the channel, either the city takes it over, and now the city's running the public channel and the government channel, which is not what I understand you want to do as a government, okay? But at least having some kind of window of time where, as, as being proposed here, where you have the month-to-month, and you have a period of time to try to work something out. And if that, if you can't work it out, you can't work it out, okay? But I don't think that the expertise that I can try to bring to this process, as far as knowledge and trying to balance the relationship, has been in place before, and is what I do for a living. And so, and I've got a connection to Salina because I helped start things up and negotiate the contract on the part of Salina in the first place many years ago. And I worked with city staff, and I enjoyed working with city staff. So all I'm suggesting here is, what do you have to lose? And I know other commissioners have said what they feel they have to lose, and I completely respect and understand the decision, okay? But what do you have to lose by giving it another 30, 45, 60 days? And if you can't work it out, do, cut it off, pull the plug on the channel, give it to somebody else, whatever. So that's just my suggestion, based on my experience.
Thank you very much. And I think that, I just have a few things I wanted to say, and, and they may sound harsh, but we have been in this place again and again and again. And, you know, it's another six months, it's another year, it's, you know, one more contract renewal. And a couple of commissioners had, had mentioned kicking the can down the field. The fact that the letter that we received from Salina Media Connection today, it seems all along, and I, and I don't quite understand it, but it seems like there's been a lot of disconnect. The staff, the commission gives direction, sets expectations, and then there's, it always comes back to, we didn't understand, we didn't know you really meant that. I agree that there's a lot of potential in that channel, but it hasn't been met, and I'm not seeing the potential for it to meet its potential. I have expressed concerns about the quality of our government being broadcast since I joined the commission in January of 2017. That is how long we've been having these conversations. I have been involved, as have my fellow members of the governing body, multiple study sessions, commission discussion and action items. We've read numerous staff updates from city staff, and city staff, I want to commend you because I think that you have gone above and beyond in trying to make sure that our expectations were communicated and understood. And we've done all this in the attempt to maintain our longstanding relationship with Salina Media Connection. Now, we do have plans in place to be able to transition broadcast responsibilities on July 1st, and staff tells us that we are ready to assume responsibility. And we have all been aware of this contract expiration date of June 30th, and our staff has, has planned accordingly. Salina Media Connection has known since mid-May that, of our vote to essentially allow the contract to lapse, as well as our proposal, our request for a proposal from them, as to what it would take to keep them operational. I can't speak for other members on the governing body, but I was, I was expecting a considerably smaller number than numbers that would essentially really increase what we're currently funding. So Salina Media Connection knows, or should know by now, that our decision to bring meeting broadcasts in-house was based on at least two key elements: being able to directly control the quality of the product and the potential to realize cost savings. Staff projected saving between $100 and $120,000 annually as a result of assuming this responsibility. When adding in the cost of maintaining Memorial Hall, those savings would be upwards of $150,000. The proposal that we received does not, A, acknowledge that we have broadcast plans in place, thus assuming the necessity of a month-to-month contract, and B, doesn't appear to exhibit an understanding of the franchise revenues that the city is relying on to fund its own media position or the assumed savings that we had expected to realize. Rather, the proposal that we received would increase our investment substantially. When I suggested that literally anyone with access to a smartphone could create and upload content, Salina Media Connection replied that I needed to check my privilege. And I get that, that comment stung, but by God, I took that to heart. Not everyone has access to a smartphone, or to a computer, or to software, or to the internet, or to the training that it takes to learn to use these things. And yes, I do believe that it's important to assure that citizens have access to those items, plus access to training and troubleshooting in order to create and upload their own content. I agree with the commissioners. I don't want to debate the merits of a partnership with Salina Public Library at this meeting, but it is helpful for us to know that if we do come to a decision not to fund Salina Media Connection, that doesn't deny access to citizens who want to create content. There is an alternative for the public to learn and have access to the appropriate technology. It's helpful to know that our equipment could be repurposed for what I assume would be a significantly smaller investment, and that we would maintain creative access for our citizens, if not access to broadcasting on a cable channel. And I just want to close by saying, the last few years of working with Salina Media Connection have been extremely frustrating. I know so many of you, and I've known you for, for decades, and you're awesome, capable, kind, compassionate people, but I just, it, you know, we have, we have done this for so many years that I'm just not in favor of continuing to invest in a partner that hasn't listened to our concerns in, in the past. So that's, that's where I'm, I'm standing for today.
Are you ready for motion?
I'm ready for motion.
Mayor Hodges, I move that we allow the contract to terminate on June 30th, 2021, and discontinue use of Channel 21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to discontinue funding for Cable Channel 21 when the current contract expires. All those in favor, say aye.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion?
Yeah. And I understand this motion will be voted on, but we do have the option of, at this time, expressing a desire to obtain requests for proposals to operate the channel. And I think this would be a good time to designate a time by which we would like to have those requests received. This is something that if it gets dropped here and gets put back on the usual rotation of projects for us to entertain, we'll probably not see the light of day until '22 or '23. So I think any action that we, we take here should include some reference to our, our future intentions. So I would, you know, propose an amendment to that motion to allow the city to obtain requests for proposals. I don't know the timeframe that's required to do that. Defer to the city manager. So that there, we have something definite in front of us in the near future. You know, there are organizations in, in our city that could possibly step up to the plate. There's several options. I won't put anybody on the spot I mentioned names, but, but, you know, there is the, the capital and potential in, in this area to, you know, assume our production on Channel 21. So that, that is an actual action plan to move that amendment.
Just, just to clarify, could I, so your proposal for an amendment to the, the motion was to send out a request for proposals from organizations to...
On my sheet of paper, I put by August 23rd. I, I honestly can't sit here right now and figure out the, the actual time that it technically takes to receive that. I'd have to ask city manager for assistance in that regard.
So if we were to prepare a request for, typically prepare a request for proposals, we would have a level of detail in terms of what it is that we're requesting for, for services. In this particular case, I think we'd be doing ourselves and the respondents a disservice if, if it were open-ended without some regard for budget. We may end up with a quarter of a million dollars being the starting point and going up, which, as Ms. Buskey said, that, maybe that is the right number. But I think you, as a governing body, have a value proposition first of, you know, how much you're willing to, to allocate for that channel and that service. So I guess that's a long way of saying, i, i, if it's just open-ended proposals, much like we gave Salina Media Connection the opportunity to submit, then that can probably be turned around pretty quickly. But I think you then may end up with kind of a hodgepodge of responses that may make it difficult... that may make it difficult on the back end to sort through.
Well, I, I like the open-ended proposal because the organization's bidding may have access to funding of their own, and they might not need as much as we've been spending. I mean, they'd be foolish not to accept it, but, but, you know, they, they may have resources that we don't know about.
Sure. So I guess in more direct response to your question, if, if the expectation is an open-ended proposal, not a lot of detail prepared by staff in advance, then an August 23rd date probably would give 45 days or so for people to respond, and that's fairly typical.
Procedural, procedural, if I, if I'm not willing to amend my motion?
So if it's characterized as a motion, as an amendment, then it would take a second to amend, and then you would vote standalone on the amendment. So I, you know, I think what you're referring to is commonly referred to as a friendly amendment, and this one is more proposed, needs a second, and you would need to deliberate it as a governing body.
Okay, so we have a proposal to amend the original motion to send out an RFP for organizations that would like to assume responsibility for Channel 21. Is there a second? Okay, the amendment dies for lack of a second, which brings us back to the original motion, which was to allow the contract to terminate on June 30th, 2021, and discontinue use of Channel 21. Normally, we do that, like, we have the public comment during the public comment time. So at this ti, I, I would look to my fellow commissioners in terms of, do we want to allow Mr. Stevens to speak to the commission at this juncture?
Call the question.
Pardon me? Call the question?
Call the question.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
And that motion passes 4-1. All right. That moves us on to item 8.1.
Item 8.1, second reading, ordinance number 21-11063, vacating the existing utility easement located at 3344 Scanlon Avenue.
Again, I will be recusing myself from discussion on this.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Hoppick has recused himself. Ordinance number 21-11063 was passed on first reading on June 21st, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any questions for staff? Do we, do we have any questions or comments from the public? No, I would bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 21-11063 on second reading. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11063 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 4-0, and we will recall Ms., Commissioner Hoppick. All right, just in time for other business. Is there any, are there any items under other business that a commissioner would like to bring before the commission?
Commissioner Davis here, that really news business, but I did just want to let citizens know that restricting smoking in public parks is not going to receive news anywhere in the United States. We are so far from being first place to do that. If you cross the proverbial county line, you'll see that many, many, many parks and gardens and outdoor spaces restrict the use of incendiary devices, especially with cigarettes, aren't, from the fire danger and from the health perspective. So we're, we're not setting a, a new frontier as many people might fear.
Thank you. Anyone else? And if not, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will not see you next week. We'll see you on the 12th.